Being six oh two on Tuesday, July twenty-third in Westboro Town Hall will convene the Westboro Select Board Meeting. I would like to say thank you to Westboro TV for streaming and live capture of tonight's meeting. For all those, all are welcome to join us in this Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I see a number of folks out in the audience. I'll just look to see if there's anyone here for open forum. Come on up Boyd. Oh, sorry, didn't see you Jen.
Hi, Boyd Conklin at Water Street. So as many of the boards, I'll thank you for your service guys and gals. As many of the boards and commissions and citizens of Westboro do support the trans agenda, there are many that do not. And there's a little conversation here from Elon Musk and Jordan Peterson that I think is timely relevant to the point. The school systems, DESI, secondary education, more Healy, everybody's for this kind of stuff, AMA, pediatric, some of the pediatric associations and psychological kind of things. But there's a lot of money in it for these characters and follow the money. Anyways, here goes, here's Musk. It happened to one of my older boys where I was essentially tricked into signing documents of one of my older boys Xavier. This was before I really had any understanding of what was going on. We had COVID going on and so there was a lot of confusion. You know, I was told Xavier might commit suicide. And this is commonly what they, what they, everybody says, oh, it's suicide or transition. This is the line to the parents. Peterson, Jordan Peterson saying, that was a lie right from the onset. No reliable clinician ever believed that. There was never any evidence for that. And if there was a higher suicide rate, it was because of the underlying depression and anxiety because of the gender dysphoria. And every goddamn clinician knows that too, and they are too cowardly to come out and say it. When I saw that the lies start to propagate, it just made the back of my hair stand up. So you're telling parents that unless they agree to this radical transformation, that their children are going to die. And you think that it is moral and you think that it is true. That is so pathological that it's almost incomprehensible. I can't imagine a therapist doing anything worse than that. And here's Musk. It's incredibly evil and I completely agree that people promoting this should go to prison. Jordan Peterson. It won't stop till that happens. It will just go underground. Puberty blockers, blockers are being assessed by kids all the time through non-medical channels. Here's Musk. So I was just tricked into doing this. It wasn't explained to me how puberty blockers are actually sterilization drugs. I lost my son essentially. They call it dead naming for the reason. The reason is, it's called dead naming is because your son is dead. My son Xavier is dead, killed by the woke mind virus. Peterson. I'm sorry to hear that. I can't believe what that must be like. Having undergone this transition, Musk's Xavier is now legally known as Vivian Gina Wilson and has become estranged from his father. His mother is Musk's wife, Justin Wilson, although further details about the private life remain scarce. And so they figure that for each kid, they can get to do this procedure. They can milk a million bucks out of them through the doctors, hospitals, psychiatric and this kind of thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Anyone else? Come on up Jen.
Hi, I'm Jen Kirkland, I'm the Recreation Director. Just here tonight to inform the public of a couple of opportunities for the public to give their input on the community center. As I'm hopeful everyone is aware, the town purchased the building at fifteen hundred Union Street to serve as a multi-generational community center. We've promised the whole way that we hear from the public and what you'd like to see in that building. So now is your opportunity. So there'll be a couple of ways to do that. There's a survey that's on our website. That'll be public from yesterday, the twenty-second through August ninth. There'll be three opportunities to meet and discuss what you'd like to see in the building with the architects on July thirtieth and August fifth. One of those options will be remote. So if you can't get out in person, you'll have a chance to attend remotely. And new on the website as of today, Westboro TV did a virtual tour of the building. So if you've never been inside the building or have only been in parts of the building, it's a great way. It's about fifteen minutes long, but it's a great way to see the space and it's all empty. So kind of to visualize what could be done there. So we just wanted to make you aware that we really want your input and hope you'll participate in the survey and the public input sessions.
Thank you Jen, appreciate that information.
I just was hoping to show, just following Jen's.
Jen, could you just, I mean Jen first.
Sorry, we're all named Jen here. I just wanted to show the, just the homepage so that people know sort of where to go. So under news and updates, we have our most recent news and update, which is that we've released the, the survey and that the sessions have been announced. But if you're just trying to follow the project, you can go under the spotlight and media. And so we have several sort of hot topics here, but one of them is the community center. So if you click on that, you'll get, you'll get access to the survey, information about the public sessions. This is the link to that, to the new video that Jen just mentioned. And then, you know, just following along, just key dates and actions that we've taken as well as documents that folks might be interested in. So just wanting to show that as well.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thanks for taking the time to actually show it. I know sometimes we say it's on the website and then people are like, where is it? I couldn't find it. So for those that want to go back and watch this meeting, they'll be able to see that. So thank you.
All right, moving on, let's move to the item three, site plan overview at twenty, excuse me. Item two, request for special liquor license at Central House at forty-four South Street.
I think we have the proponent here.
Come on up. Yep, come on up. Good, introduce yourself.
My name's Dan Flood from Central House, forty-four South Street, Westboro.
Welcome.
Asking for a special permit for a one-day block party. So we got permission from the, I met with both chiefs, kind of discussed what our plan was and just looking to celebrate our fifty-year anniversary, right? So this August tenth, it's going to be a Saturday, rain or shine event. So we have a couple of tents. In the event, we get some weather. Hopefully we don't, right? Hopefully it stays just like it has been lately. But yeah, any questions you guys have for, for us?
So typically I would approve a one-day liquor license, but this one's a little bit different because Central House obviously already holds a liquor license. So this is really more of a, a special license because there's lots of sort of details behind how they work. But it's an additional license so that he can serve outside for this event to celebrate their anniversary.
I think it was in our packet too, that's similar to what we did up at Doubletree Hotel.
Yes, yeah. And I think years ago.
We've done it before, yeah.
I think years ago we, they used to do a pancreatic cancer event outside of Arturo's, which was some more.
That's correct, yeah.
Yep.
And just for clarification, the serving, service outside will be beer, wine only or malt kind of beverages, that kind of thing?
Correct, yeah. And there's no like going back and forth, right? Like Kristy said, it does kind of have to be two separate entities, right? So, yeah, and then there's going to be like kind of a barricaded area where we're kind of watching people going in and out.
I guess what, it, it starts at three o'clock? Is that what I saw? So three day, that's great.
Yep.
It's already sold out, I heard.
Well, I don't, you know, we'll see. It may still be seen, you know.
Well, congratulations on fifty years. It sounds like a terrific, terrific event. So any further questions or would like someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that a move to grant a special liquor license to Central House Tavern at forty-four South Street for an event on August tenth, two thousand four.
Two thousand twenty-four?
Two thousand twenty-four. Going to be the thirtieth event. From three to eight PM contingent on the following, one being the business is a for-profit entity, only wine and malt may be sold. Two, the special licenses apply to and be exercised in a distinct demarcated premises for alcohol service and consumption. The premises must be enclosed by a barrier. Three, the alcohol we sold for the event is purchased under an individual invoice separate from the purchase of the regular business. And it must be stored in a manner that is separate from the business's regular inventory. Alcohol purchased for this event shall be obtained from and returned to post-event source of, or sources named on the A B C C's list of authorized distributors. Where they expect alcohol purchased under the special liquor license, it cannot leave the demarcated premises and migrate into the regular business. Nor can alcohol from the business migrate outside to the demarcated premises. Six, only structures that have passed an inspection of town permitting departments may be used. Seven, all individuals who are verified to ABH twenty-one plus will need to wear a wristband while in the premises. And no individuals under twenty-one will be allowed in the premises demarcated.
Second, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you guys.
Good luck.
See you all there. Everybody's invited, right?
All right, now on to item three, site plan overview, twenty-five Connector Road. And Celia, you mentioned there would be someone remote.
Yes, I'm here, listen.
Mr. Freeman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, terrific. Welcome.
Thank you.
I think a representative of the project is setting up now, so we'll give him a moment. Welcome.
My name's Craig Miller, Waterfield Design Group, we're the engineers for E G. Been making a presentation today. I am the pinch hitter. Our project manager is on the west coast on vacation. So I'll do the best I can.
Definitely throw some curveballs then.
We appreciate you being here.
I'm sure you do.
So I don't know, does that work for everyone?
And we have a packet, so.
You do? Okay, so I didn't know how much you wanted me to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this will go, catch it, they'll catch it on TV, so it's good.
Okay, do you want me to dive in and give an overview or?
Do we know, yeah, who's?
Right, so Mike Freeman and Tyler Phelps are the owners, the client in this case of the property. And we represent them and their remote.
Okay. And you know, just introduce us and what this is about for the community to understand it and then go into whatever details you'd like to share.
Sure. So Craig Miller, Waterfield Design Group, we're the engineers for the twenty-five Connector Road project. This is a conversion of an existing hotel site to residential apartment use. Same number of bedrooms, but some modifications internally. We're not here for the internal modifications, the building, it's building department. We're here for the external site changes that are required or needed as part of the conversion to apartments. So the buildings will remain the same on the X, on the outside. This is a twelve-acre site with seven different buildings. And six hotel buildings and one community type building with a pool. The plan is to convert those existing hotel rooms to a residential apartment use. Twenty-five percent of the units will be low income. We're proposing thirty-one, this is the site here, the existing conditions, you're probably familiar with it. We're proposing thirty-one. You need to speak at the mic, right? Thirty-one, we're proposing thirty-one new parking spaces to support the change in use. Those parking spaces will be along the southwest side of the site. This edge right here, so that's the.
Well, that's what you're seeing here is the thirty-one spaces.
Today, that's a one-sided roadway with parking on one side only. We're going to add parking along the other side. The roadway stays the same, we're just adding thirty-one extra parking spaces along this side. And those parking spaces are, are outside of the hundred-foot wetland buffer and the hundred-and-twenty-five-foot vernal pool area as well.
I'm sorry, you said they're outside?
Outside of it, right.
Okay.
That's why we put them there. We had to search, you know, strategically within the site to be able to get that additional parking to work. This plan here was upside down, but it shows how the fire truck maneuvers. This is the town of Westboro. Fire truck, I can give you the specifics of the numbers in chapter and verse.
P E five-six-two-three-six.
Doesn't mean much to me, but to the fire department, it means a lot. So we've got that, the turning radius works, so the fire truck can continue to access the entire site even with the addition of the new spaces. As I said, the access road is remaining unchanged. So there's no, no changes there. So this plan shows the proposed drainage. We designed the additional, we're creating some new impervious. And so that new impervious is being accommodated, the hundred-year storm. All of that runoff is being pushed underground with infiltrator chambers. So the light blue footprint, the rectangular footprint of the chambers. And all of the hundred-year storm is captured and remains in the soil. We tested the soil and made sure that it can handle the infiltration proposed by the new runoff.
There will also be. Doesn't show up, doesn't show up as well.
Yeah, well, it doesn't show up very well. Maybe in your packet, it's a little bit easier to see. But there's white orange rectangle right here. That's the leaching field for proposed septic. So as I said earlier, we're not increasing the number of bedrooms. But the residential use, full-time occupancy as opposed to hotel use requires additional sanitary capacity. There's a moratorium in the town, so we cannot add any new flows to the town's septic system. The entire property today is on, is on town sewer. The additional flow generated by the change in use will be accommodated by the septic, onsite septic system. And from a practical perspective, how that's happening is one of the existing six buildings will go to the septic. The others will remain on the town sewer. So that, it's hard to see on the plan, you might be able to see it better in your packet, but that's the leaching field, the pump chambers. And the septic tanks are in orange under the new parking area that we showed. Apologize, the graph, the line on the graphic is not very dark, is not dark enough. And I just want to make sure I covered everything. There's a minimum FAR in town, that three sixty, and we want to keep that.
I'm sorry, what's FAR?
Floor area ratio.
Okay.
It's really more of a building code issue than it is site plan, but it's in my notes and as the pinch hitter, I have to say it. Landscaping is very robust at this site and it's going to remain that way. So the intent of, of the owners as they go forward with the apartments is to maintain and enhance the landscaping as they go. And that's it. That's all I have.
Terrific, thank you. I'll just open up to the board if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick questions. Just clarification on the infiltration and the runoff. So did you say that the, the new system will accommodate a hundred percent of hundred-year runoff for the entire site? Or just for the impervious area that you've added? Just help me to understand that.
Well, as we improve the site with the new parking, we're creating new impervious.
Yep.
So we have to accommodate the new impervious.
Yep.
So the site functions the way it does today.
Okay.
And we're not changing that.
Okay.
But because we're creating new impervious, our onsite drainage accommodates the hundred-year storm for the new impervious.
For the new impervious, okay.
So the idea is no net increase in runoff.
Understood.
So we're, we're providing that.
And how many units currently exist at the site onsite, please?
Yeah, I think maybe Tyler or Mike can answer that.
A hundred and nine, yeah, a hundred and nine units.
Hundred and nine.
And I know it's in our packet, but the public doesn't see that. Could you give us the breakdown of the future, what, what the full buildup looks like in terms of one studio versus one versus two bedroom units of those hundred and nine?
I cannot, but maybe Mike and Tyler can.
Johnny, do you want to take that? I can answer it.
Yes, let me pull that up. It's going to be a mixture of one bedroom and two bedroom units. Pulling up the breakout.
Yep, take your time.
Asking all my questions.
So it happens when you go first? You know me on this.
So it'll be eighty-five one bedrooms, twenty-four two bedrooms, a hundred and nine units total.
Okay, thank you. Can you provide a little more information about the clubhouse, what it will include? I know you mentioned a pool, but what it will include, some of those amenities, please?
I think that's also a mic question. You guys have that or?
Yeah, I can answer that. Typically, we'll do a full renovation of the clubhouse, including the gym area. We'll refresh the pool, pool furniture as well, new FFNE for the clubhouse. Typically using the existing space and maximizing it to maximize the amount of amenities for the, for the tenants.
Okay. And what are your projections for school-aged children based on this improvement?
Typically, we see on these projects, not a lot of school-aged children. We have, our onsite management team did a study in the past on this. She wasn't able to send it over before this meeting, but we can share that with you. There's not a, a ton of schoolchildren at our, at our sites typically.
At your sites typically that are apartments or that are, you know, temporary as in hotel?
That are apartments. Due to the size of these units, we don't get a, a lot of families. Demographic is typically young professionals or workforce.
Yep, okay. Do you have, so I, I guess I just would note for the benefit of the board, I don't know if the board is aware, but the school department through the superintendent is part of the permit process and does get this packet and has an opportunity to comment. So I did verify that, so. I have one other question. I noticed you're adding some bike storage and parking areas, which is great. I think that's super. Are, are you providing any improvements by way of electrical charging stations?
We are providing infrastructure so that twenty-eight EV chargers can be ready to be installed. So we will just be providing the infrastructure, septic hole.
I'm sorry, you're providing the infrastructures, will that be ready to go with the launch of the site?
Yes.
Okay. I may have some other questions, but go ahead.
I was just going to comment with respect to the affordable housing component. The underlying zoning requires twenty percent. And the developers have been working with the Affordable Housing Trust to bring that up to twenty-five percent.
Terrific.
And so they've been.
Which is positive for.
Which is very positive. We, we think it's positive for the development and we're, we're waiting to finalize some numbers. The trust is a working group that we'll be meeting late this week, early next week to come up with a formal proposal with respect to subsidizing some of that, you know, some or all of that expansion. The impact of going from twenty to twenty-five percent is that all one hundred and nine units will be added to the S H I inventory for the town. Which helps us.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
Hundred seventy-one, hundred nine, excellent.
So in addition, getting additional six affordable units. We really help our inventory count with respect to chapter forty B.
Is that in perpetuity?
That, in perpetuity, yes.
Thank you, Alan.
Just had a question back on the parking. So I know you're adding new parking spots. And be an ignorant question here, but are the parking, I guess, not sure if the parking rules are the same for a hotel versus an apartment? And I guess the, I'm assuming not because you're adding some. And so the second part of my question is, do those additional ones conform then with what the zoning requires for number of parking spots for number of apartment units?
There's a parking, transportation study that was commissioned by the owners that netted out that thirty-one additional spaces would work for the town's requirements. We were not part of that study, so I don't have the chapter and verse on how the study concluded that. But we were given information that we should design for thirty-one additional new spaces.
Okay, perfect.
But that transportation study was what came to the conclusion that thirty-one.
Thirty-one is what you needed?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
So I'm not familiar with the current zoning is for this area. And, and does this use fall within that zoning?
I believe it's highway business district.
That's not make sense. Special permit. It's a special permit.
Special permit, okay, got it. All right, thank you.
So I'll just say I'm excited about the project, you know, here regularly in the town as well as you hear from the state.
So I'll just say, I'm excited about the project, you know, here regularly in the town, as well as you hear from the state all the time about the housing issues in the state, so this is fantastic. It's great to hear about the affordability piece of it as well. I appreciate and applaud the owners of the property being willing to do, to make that, that move up to 25%. My question is this, it, it sounds like, you know, we're going from a temporary residency to permanent residency. And there also sounds like there's an expectation that there's going to be increased volume of cars and likely, I would assume, more people on the property, being that this is so close to the Route 9 interchange there. I'm just curious, has there been any considerations to if there's any needs for additional traffic requirements out at the intersection there, being that we're going to have at least a minimum of perhaps 31 cars? But more concerning might be the fact that if you're at full occupancy now, potentially, all of those parking spots would be filled. Whereas today, I don't know what the occupancy is, but let's just say it's 70%. That's a significant change in occupancy. So I'm just curious, has there been any discussion about that, and is that something that the planning board should consider when they, when they look at this as well?
In, in a general sense, a hotel use has got more unpredictable traffic flow than a full-time residential use. Full-time residential use is pretty predictable, morning and evening peak. I don't have the average daily traffic for Connector Road, but it's a fairly good-sized road. And 31 cars, even if you doubled that for AM and PM, so 62 vehicle, new vehicle trips is a drop in the bucket in the percentage of the daily traffic that would be on Connector Road.
Yeah, I guess.
And I would assume that the traffic study would show that, or we could get that data and illustrate it, but that's typically how that works.
So there wasn't a traffic, correct me if I'm wrong here, there wasn't a traffic study specific to this project you're referring to?
We have performed a traffic study. This budget, we can provide, provide that information as well.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sorry, yes, we have provided a traffic study project, and we can, that. I don't have the numbers right up there.
Okay.
But he said he could share that with us.
That'd be great, yeah.
We could share it with the town engineer, the planning director, either or anyone. And, and I know confidently that the ADT of Connector Road would not be impacted in the slightest by 62 additional trips.
That's great. You know, it's just the nature of the building as well, like, does that change the dynamic of, of the traffic in the area? So, no, it's great, it's glad, I'm glad to hear that you've done that work and you're willing to share it with the town. So I'll just look forward to hearing how it goes with the planning board at this point. So I can appreciate you coming to the town and, and being willing to do this work with the property. It's always great to see a reuse, and I think it's a more important reuse than it is today, so that's fantastic. Any other further questions or comments?
No, you asked one on traffic, thank you.
Okay. There's nothing else? I don't think there's any sort of motion or anything? Did we get any?
Are there any questions that you had to?
Question, yeah.
I, I think my only question would be back to the schoolchildren. You know, I appreciate what the owners are offering. I think we've seen other experience in other developments in town. And I would just want to ask that the planning board take a hard look at that. Just, just to understand the impact and impact on bus routes and anything else, you know. Westboro's a great place to live, and we welcome kids, we just need to understand the impact.
Of course, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you very much for your time and your presentation, and we look forward to hearing about how the project goes.
Appreciate your constructive comments tonight and appreciate your positive words on the project.
Congratulations, thanks.
Yeah, thanks for pinch hitting too.
You did a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to item four, update of new FY 2025 program changes on youth and family services and waste management. So Christie, whatever order you'd like to go.
Sure, so as the board is aware, we had two pretty significant changes to service delivery models and programs. The effect that started on July 1st. So the first one was youth and family services. So we contracted with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, and they started effective July 1st to provide clinical services to our community. And so I, I do have a write-up, but I'm just going to read this from the director, the clinical director at SYFS. She was just unable to be here this evening, but we wanted to provide an update. So she said that SYFS had a very positive start to our time in Westboro. We started to meet some of the stakeholders and key groups in town. Thus far, everyone has been extremely welcoming, and we're looking forward to continuing to build our relationship here. Emily, who is currently the clinician, as you might remember that we, in our contract, were going to have up to two full-time clinicians. Given the case, the size of the caseload, as we got this started, there was, there wasn't an immediate need for two full-time, so we brought on one at this point. She has 10 open clients, ages ranging 13 to 80. Six are transfers and four are new clients. Another new client is scheduled to open. Every client that she's seen is coming back or planning to come back for a second session. Some, also in the contract was the idea of offering some additional group work. So we have offered, or Emily through SYFS has offered Coping with Crafts, which was a group for six to seven-year-olds. Unfortunately, folks did not sign up for that, for that, that group. And then they're also offering Stellar Starts, which is aimed to rising fourth graders, just preparing for them to start the, in the new school. That's scheduled to start in August. So there really are some exciting programs, and I hope the community will pay attention to the, to these new program offerings that we haven't done in the past. At this point, you know, it is all sort of very new, and so kind of a expected slow start and transition, but really hoping that folks will continue to watch and see if there's programs that, that will meet theirs or their children's needs. So, yes.
Is there anything we or other departments can do to help support the sort of outreach for the programs? Besides talking about them here?
We're certainly trying to advertise them also on social media. I mean, I really think we have, we did retain the outreach and program, or outreach coordinator position. That really is a responsibility of that position as well, to make sure that the community is aware of these new programs. And I know that, that they're working to make those connections. So I think, you know, it's, it's only the 23rd, so I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of excitement coming. And as they get to know the community even better, they can offer programs that they think might align. And I think, you know, I think so far, so good. We're, you know, I think we're excited about it, and it's going well. And, and the fact that we're, we're already seeing the, I think, almost the same number of clients as our clinicians were in June, so.
No, I, I think, I guess, one suggestion, sort of tailing off of what Sean had suggested, is any way in which we can advertise, perhaps in ways we haven't, some of those programs since it's new, because I can see a person not understanding this with the Labor, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services would be like, oh, that's something out of town, I don't have a car to drive to, I can't go to. So to the extent that maybe another community advocate is a place where we can put some information and just make sure we're explaining that, that would be great.
And I think we're not advertising it as SYFS necessarily, so just to, to create that continuity that we wanted. I think the two groups that I just mentioned are for children, and so I think once school is sort of back in session, it'll make it a little bit easier, people can maybe become a little, or easier channels, I guess, to, to sort of focus the advertisement.
Yeah, no, it's early, and so, and I know that that was right out of the gate, really, as the program was launching, so.
Yeah, just to add to that, I mean, it might be something to talk to the schools, if the schools haven't been part of it, to advertise. And you're, it's like, my thought was, we're still advertising, this is still advertised as Westboro Youth and Family Services. It's just SYFS is providing, but that's kind of behind the scenes for, so as long as it's advertised that way. But I think for these things, especially this new one, it sounds like it'd be great for the schools to get it out, because it's really there to help them out as well.
Yeah, and I know there's been good communication between those groups, so, but, you know, we'll continue to do that.
That's exciting.
Comments? Terrific, thank you, Christie.
Okay. And then the next one is the Waste Management Program, or Pays You Through a Program. And we do have our Public Health Director, as well as one of our Waste Management Coordinators here to give you a presentation.
Welcome, Jen, welcome, chief.
Hello. Hi, Jen Sullivan, your Public Health Director, and we have your former police chief, Al Gordon, your current Waste Program Coordinator. We wanted to give you a presentation tonight on how things are going. So for permit sales for FY '24, last year, there were 1,631 permits sold this year. As of the end of June, there's been 2,152 permits sold, with the household average of 1,938 households that's participating. 171 of those, 2,152 were sold online, and 97 senior permits were sold currently. Subsidy Senior Bag Program and Where to Purchase a Pays You Throw Bags. The senior subsidy program has been asked a lot about. The seniors are coming, they're really interested, they've, 18 have submitted and 18 have been approved. We have a lot of veterans that are actually requesting to be part of this subsidy. So I think that's, would be like to have further conversation on adding that into that as well. And also, Where to Purchase Pays You Throw Bags, Pays You Throw Bags is sold again, still at Roach Brothers, Ace Hardware, Noria Energy in Westboro, and Market Basket in Indian Market in Shrewsbury. Stop and Shop, we just signed some paperwork for them, they're meeting with Waste Zero tomorrow. It's usually a 90-day process, we're probably at day 30. So we still have a little bit to go before they actually start selling their enforcement. So the first two weeks, from July 1st to the 13th, we did more education than anything of the program. A lot of people seemed not still be familiar with the program, which we were kind of shocked about. So they would come in, if we noticed they didn't have a permit, we would educate them on a permit, and the bags, where to get them, and so on. July 15th was our enforcement date, we put a sign up, as you can see here. We would have put permits, but unfortunately, people know it as stickers more, so we would explain to them as they came in. But that sign actually helped out a lot. It would make people come in, turn around, and go right out. The implementing this Pays You Through a Program definitely has reduced the traffic flow there. We've seen a 50% reduction. It's, it's amazing, like, amazing on how much less of traffic you have there. The reduction tonnage, we've noticed, this is by the roll-ons that you put the waste in, are not being emptied two to three times a day. They're being emptied maybe daily, so that's huge. We have tons of people saying, you know, I never recycled before, but I saved a bag, and they were all excited. So their residents are definitely recycling more as well. We're noticing now that we're there more, that illegal dumping is happening before and after hours of the transfer station when Harvey's is still open. So that's been an issue that we've addressed with them, that we want them to secure that site, because we've got commercial vehicles going there, people without permits during that time. Al's been getting there at 7:00 AM every day to stop the morning flow. And so in the afternoon, when the transfer stations close, even Harvey's employees themselves are telling people not to go in, and they're still just going under the rope, through the cone. So at some points, they've parked two trucks at the entryway and the exitway, but it hasn't been daily. So I have, we're, we need to come to an agreement there, because it definitely needs to be secured. Through enforcement, a significant number of out of town people with and without permits, commercial vehicles and former residents who have moved yet still use the transfer station, we find, and we've been turning them all away. So that's obviously helping in the traffic flow. It's amazing, we had one gentleman who didn't even buy a sticker for himself, but bought a sticker for his brother in Clinton, gave it to him, license plates didn't even match, and he still tried to use it. So we pulled the sticker off and sent him on his way. Many Tidy Town customers unfortunately think that it's okay to just go and dump. If they have some overflow, we've been educating them there, saying, nope, sorry, still need to get a sticker. And recycling, with our recycling program free for our residents, surrounding towns are thinking that it's okay for them to come and dump or recycle as well on our, our transfer station site. But we've told them no, we've educated them there. And I obviously like to think, I mean, we had such huge traffic in our office, so our senior workers were absolutely amazing. There was no way we could, could have gotten through that without them. And that's Tanya Pino, Pat Quist, and Ally Nemeck, and obviously our admin, who was phenomenal too, and my other staff who answered the phone that never stopped. So I wanted to throw a shout-out to them as well. So we're here for any questions, if you have any.
Terrific, thank you for being here. I'll just open up to the board for comments. Oh, yeah, sure, chief. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I've seen a big difference. The first day that we were there, we had 103 people come in that didn't have stickers. We allowed them to dump, and you know, one of the things I've learned as my past and chief is, you don't mess with people's trash. That seems to upset them more than anything else. So again, we helped them out, let them dump, and just, we took the plate numbers down and told them, you get one bite out of the apple, you have to get a sticker. And a lot of them did, they went in, they got the stickers. So we don't see a lot of repeats. We do have some people that are coming in, and it's just, you know, they try to get, you know, one after the other, you know, let me just dump today, let me. Now we're at the point, if you come in with no sticker, or you come in with no bags, you're turned away. And, I mean, nobody wants to keep the trash in the car for the weekend. And, you know, so it's getting the word across. I think Monday I was there, and I had four people that I had to turn away. That's pretty good.
I think we agreed upon it, like, 99% of people, we believe have the stickers now. It was rough there for a while. He said about 103 the first day. That was probably out of only 127-ish that actually didn't have a sticker, so that was huge. So we've definitely, it's slowed down a lot, the enforcement has slowed down a lot. It's just, we're, we're hoping to move on to education next, but we're still in this process of the enforcement.
You know, the biggest thing I'm seeing now with the people that are coming in is, a lot of people from Upton, we get a lot of them, they have curbside pickup with their trash. And a lot of people that are going away on vacation, they don't want to wait till the end of the week to get rid of the trash, and they know in the past, they even able to come to Westboro and nobody would challenge them. So now they're coming in, and we're catching them at the, at the gate, and they're being turned away. So I think, once the message gets out to these other communities that we're not open for everybody, it'll make a big difference. And it'll make a big difference in our tonnage, so.
I really appreciate you stepping up and helping with this, chief.
It's, it's a lot of work, but, you know, I can honestly say, I might, I might have had two or three people that have given me an argument. And, you know.
But that's him, though. Other of us that have been there all the time, it doesn't, it doesn't go that way.
There's a higher percentage, right, Jen?
You know, some people don't want to put the sticker on the front bumper of the car, they think it detracts from the value of the car. And, you know, we just tell them, look, if you don't want to abide by the rules, there's an easy solution. You get curbside pickup, you pay the extra for it. We still pay for that to get disposed of. Eventually, it gets weighed when it goes through the scales. But, you know, I'm not going to argue with people, that's, that's not what we're there for.
They don't really argue, is it?
No.
So it worked out well.
They've been really good, they're very, they're very respectful, people remember me from my past, so. And, you know, I treat them with dignity also.
Of course.
Good, appreciate that. Comments?
Now, it's eye-opening, I think it's what we expected to see. We knew that, that tonnage wasn't just because people in Westboro threw away a lot more trash than other people in the state, so. I guess not surprising, but probably disappointing that we've been paying for it a long time, and people are using it that way. So I guess my only concern is, you know, I know that the plan here is that this isn't permanent, and, but how do we, how long do we go before? We can't have folks there doing this and making sure that people don't revert, or others don't show up. And I think it's got to be that partnership with, with Harvey's to make sure that this works.
Sure. Well, so I, I want to be, so as the board is aware, the public, some of you may be aware, we, Christie, myself, Chris Pant, Jen, I may be excluding someone if I am.
Dr. Orluk.
Dr. Orluk, sorry, are still in active negotiations with Waste Connections, E.L. Harvey, for our current contract, which is also their permit to operate, as it's currently structured. I'm, I say this with disappointment. I'm, I say this with disappointment, I don't think we can expect a lot of cooperation from Harvey's in terms of helping with any enforcement. To their credit, they've been crystal clear about that from the beginning, and I think even what Jen is saying with asking for like the trucks to kind of create a barricade around that area, we haven't seen that sort of consistently applied. Hopefully that will happen, but I, I do think if the transfer station remains open long-term and accessible to residents of Westboro, that I think that this may be a budgetary item we're going to have to continue to plan on for enforcement. I think we've seen the impact, and my gut instinct, based on all the conversations I've had, is that as soon as we take our foot off the gas, those numbers will start to spike right back up. So I do think kudos to the creativity, working also with Irene Congdon around the grant and the funding for the positions, all great, but I do think that if we're going to keep the transfer station open, we need to, again, we don't keep it open, if we want to continue to access it, excuse me, it's something we're going to have to pay for.
Yeah, I would, I would just underscore that Harvey's has said unequivocally that they will not be doing enforcement. So we definitely are going to need to, I think, I think given what we've seen and the value of the position, you know, it all, it all translates into dollars, right? Because people aren't dumping that we have...
We're going to save money on the tonnage.
Exactly. And so I think we are going to have to, I think we are really going to have to consider funding a position. I think Jen and I have talked about other opportunities for grants for the remainder of this fiscal year, but, but I do think in order to keep sort of this momentum and the success of this, we have to have somebody there.
I can also add, one of the big things that we saw during the first week we were there is Harvey's went and changed the hours on Saturdays, and that was, that caused a major problem for us. They went from two forty-five down to one o'clock closing, and a number of people, well, they show up at, you know, two forty-five anyway, you know, as you're closing the gate, but now, you know, it's one o'clock, and now they're still showing up even later and later, and it caused a lot of problems there.
And also the hour difference during the week, that also did as well.
And, and those are items that we were aware of Harvey's wanting to issue an earlier closure in general or on the weekend, but I would say that we were, we were very clear that we wanted something in exchange for that, as all good negotiations, right? So if you want to close earlier here, open, you know, open earlier in the evening for folks that are working, so, you know, past five o'clock, whatever that, that time would have been. And that has been a one-sided discussion. So just to be, again, very clear, it's difficult to talk about these things sometimes, but it was a complete surprise, and I apologize for you guys who were literally boots on the ground having to deal with that, because I know people were very upset, they were upset with their fingers online, and I can only imagine what they were like in person, so thank you for being the front folks on that. But that was absolutely not the town's decision, and thank you, Christie, for posting that on the town's website, that this wasn't the town's decision.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important, because we, you know, I stood up in front of many people at public input sessions and said that we were talking about hours, but no decisions had been made, and then on July 1st, that, the hours changed without us even knowing. So I can't emphasize enough that we, we did not know that was coming.
And it, and, you know, unfortunately, there's, they'll be laboring the point here, but it really, you know, people are already upset, a lot of people are already upset with the change, and then they just felt like the town was pulling a fast one, and it made us look disingenuous and not transparent, and that is so far from what this process has been, that is very disappointing, so. But you control what you can control, right?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I actually did have one question, and it's going to involve you opening your laptop again. I had a question on your first slide, and this is just to educate me, you showed data on la, the permit, number of permits the year before and the number of permits now, and I'm just curious, previous to this program, when we were selling permits, you could buy two at a time per household, and my question is, was that number, that lower number for previous year, was that per household, or was that every single sticker that was sold?
Every single sticker that was sold.
So that's pretty amazing, because what an increase in such a short period of time, you know, I don't know, I don't remember what the number was, but several hundred, I'll say.
It should be, yeah.
Several hundred increase, and you're telling us that visually, there's been a dramatic decrease in the amount of trash that's down there, yet the permit volume has increased significantly. That's a huge, that's huge.
Why buy a permit if no one was checking it?
Right, so, I mean...
Well, the out-of-town piece of it.
Absolutely.
Out-of-town, but even resident, I mean, I hate to say it, but...
There were a lot of people that weren't buying.
If no one was checking it.
We also, on the, on the opposite side, we may be getting screamed at, and yelled at, and sworn at, however, we're also being thanked a lot, and so that was, that's, that's been great.
People get used to it, I think, over time and see the value. I, a lot of people had questions, I had a very interesting debate with my mother-in-law about this, and I would just say that, you know, it was...
Careful, you don't want to discuss family business.
No, I don't.
Thanksgiving is coming, Al.
That's true, she makes a really good Thanksgiving dinner. I will just say that, you know, it was, it was really enlightening, I think, to her to understand that she's actually going to save money. She's part of the senior program, she was one of the eighteen people that have signed up so far, and, you know, she's going to benefit hugely from this, so I think, I think people will see that over time. So I appreciate both of your work on this and everybody that's been involved.
I've had some people complain, you know, having to pay for the bags, but as they tell them, there's an offset. I mean, you used to pay upwards of a hundred and eighty, is it last year, for the two-year permit?
A hundred and eighty, yeah.
Hundred and eighty, it's forty dollars for a one-year permit, so there is an offset there. You're not going to go through a hundred and forty dollars worth of bags in a year. So there's an offset, and they will see a savings themselves.
Change is hard.
It is.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And people are very passionate about the trash.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your night. All right, we'll move on to item five, approve and execute Massachusetts Clean Water Trust Bond and Associated Documentation. Christie, if you can...
I think Barbara is going to...
Oh, Barbara's here, excellent.
Hello.
Welcome.
Barbara Wallace, the new treasurer collector. I'm in better shape now than I was the first time I saw you.
All right, I like that.
So yes, I'm here to have you approve the notes for the wastewater treatment plant for the interim loan with the Clean Water Trust, so that Chris can stack in.
Perfect, a lot of documentation, I guess, I'll just, again, open it up to the board to see if there's any questions or comments, and I think we have a fairly lengthy motion there.
Could, could, just for the benefit of the public, could you kind of, someone give an overview of what this is and why we're doing it?
Chris is here, so if you could probably come up.
Chris is here.
Chris, I don't know if you want to come up to answer the question, but while you do, in, at the town meeting in March of twenty-three, and then October of twenty-three, votes were passed at town meeting to pursue the planning and construction of drinking water infrastructure, and this is a funding mechanism that's available to us through the state, but I'm sure Chris can give more detail on what this is for.
Yeah, so this, this is the project to enhance our treatment plant at the DPW facility to add PFAS treatment, and so about an eight million dollar project, plus or minus, and this is the funding mechanism for paying for that project.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Any further questions? Then I'll look for a motion.
I will move that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight million one hundred eighty-eight, seven hundred eighty-three dollars, the bonds pursuant to Chapters Twenty-Nine C and Forty-four of the General Laws, and the vote of the town passed March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three as Article Twenty-three, as amended by a vote of the town passed October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three as Article Thirteen, for planning or construction of drinking water infrastructure known as the project. That the terms of the financing agreement or agreements in the project regulatory agreement each relating to the notes and the bonds are hereby approved, that in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight million one hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars. That each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, better known as the Trust, as at a price to be, as a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement or agreements. That the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes, such date, form, and maturities, and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by a majority of the select board and the treasurer, and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. That any certificates or documents relating to each bond and notes collectively the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a dot PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. And that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreement or agreements and the project regulatory agreement or agreements relating to the project.
Do we need to include that last paragraph as part of the motion?
I don't believe so, I think that's the clerk, that's the clerk's certificate.
I just want to make sure that we have that. Okay, I'll, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Thank you, Ian, for reading that, and thank you to our town treasurer.
Thank you.
Do you want to go to the next item while we, while you?
Sure.
So the next item is an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement that we have for the stormwater coalition. So we're, we participate in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition. When there's an amendment to that agreement, it needs to be approved by the participating communities. As noted in your packet, this amendment changes the fiscal lead for the coalition from the town of Spencer to the town of Shrewsbury, so really no impact on the town of Westboro. Your, our participation would remain unchanged, we just need to approve this amendment.
Oh, quick question, so I see this agreement is from July of twenty-twenty through July of next year, so I imagine we'll then be revisiting this again next year?
Yep.
Okay.
So is Spencer not participating, or they just can't be the fiscal lead?
I might have to go back and look.
I mean, it sounds like just the fiscal lead.
Hope Chris can answer, it looks like.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I think they just, for their own internal administrative reasons, don't, aren't able to carry out those duties anymore, so.
Okay, okay.
So Shrewsbury signed up to fulfill the responsibilities and, from our perspective, it really doesn't affect us, other than the fact that we want to remain partners in the coalition.
So Spencer will still be a part of it, then?
Yeah.
They just won't be doing that for that?
That's right, yeah.
Gotcha, I had the same question, so.
Okay. Move to approve the amendment to the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition Intermunicipal Agreement as presented.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Chris, thank you, Christie. Moving on to the presentation of the sewer studies, so perfect timing, Chris. All right, it's in our packet, untitled.
Okay, good evening, Chris Pant, Director of Public Works, I'm here with Joe Bacodoro, who's our Assistant Town Engineer. We're going to provide an update on where we are with the study that we've been discussing for, for many months. So here's the agenda, I'll give a brief recap, talk about this report summary, and some next, next steps, and then any discussion that we want to have. So I think everybody's familiar that we've been conducting this comprehensive wastewater management plan update for many months. A particular phase of that whole process is an evaluation of our current needs and projected needs, and that's what I'm going to be talking about tonight. When we started this particular phase, the early indications we got from the data indicated that we likely were overcommitted on what we've issued through permits versus what we are allowed to send to the treatment plant. So that's when we came to you back in April timeframe to request that a moratorium be put in place temporarily while we do this analysis, then come up with some recommendations on the way ahead. And so that's where we are tonight. That table there is just a reminder of, of what we send to the wastewater treatment plant, so seven point six eight is what the plant is allowed to, is permitted for, and two point eight nine of that is what we can use for flow to the plant. So over the course of the many months we've been talking about this, we've been talking about a table, and this is the table, finally. And this isn't the final answer, this is just an update on where we are, and I'll talk about where we're going. I'll start by just saying, or explaining the table itself, and then, and then kind of highlight the key points of the, of the table. So this section, hard to read on screen, but it's roughly orange, that is what was documented in our original CWP from twenty years ago, or two thousand and seven, two point eight nine, which is our limit at the plant, and that was broken down into various allotments across different sectors. This area in blue is, is what we have permitted, so that's the paperwork. So this column two, four point two seven, that is the amount of flow, and that's in millions of gallons, so that's four million two hundred seventy thousand gallons of flow that we've committed, the town has committed to, to some entity, whoever that is, a, a single-family home, or, or a business, or otherwise, and that's what we've got on paper. There's, there's a clarification of that, so it says permitted, that's loosely used as a term, because this goes back many, many decades, there's lots of research that went into figuring out that number, and in many cases, there aren't permits for, for properties that have been in existence for many, many years and using or sending flow to the treatment plant. So to get a baseline number, which this is, we needed to make some assumptions, so it's a certain type of use at that property, there's no documentation, we assigned a certain use to it, and that's, that number was incorporated into that four point two seven. The next column over, column three, that is projected flow. So we did a projection from now, twenty years out, based on population, what we know about vacancies of properties around the town, and anything else that would influence potential sewer, sewer use over the next two decades. And so using a number of planning factors that are basically industry-type standards, we came up with that number of point three five, add those together, and so our ultimate requirement would be in terms of if we go off of the existing use, and what we project to be uses would be four point six million gallons on paper. So then you have to apply what we really do, right? So we actually send flow to the treatment plant, it's measured, as we've talked about before, it's metered, so we know what we're physically sending to the plant, and so that's where the green comes into place, the last three columns. So column five is, this two point zero seven is a five-year average from the past five years of what we've been sending to the wastewater treatment plant. We know there's highs and we know there's lowers, but that's the average over the last five years. And then number six is the projection of, of actual flow over the next twenty years, and so that gives us the two point five seven. So lots of numbers there, that's the explanation, the bottom line from this table is this number here, four point six two, is what we, again, this includes projections, we, we could just talk about current, but I, I think it's just easier to talk about project, like the whole thing, right? So we know the number we have is four point six two on paper, and the number we're actually using is two point five. is 2.5, and what we want is those two numbers ideally to be equal and then to be less than what we're allowed, which is 2.89, right? That's not going to happen, even in the perfect world, that wouldn't happen, because this number is based on planning factors and those, there's always built-in fluff, for lack of a better, more scientific word, that causes that number to be higher. We just, we just would like to see it a little bit closer to this 2.57 than what it is right now. But that's, that's our start point. So in terms of next steps, these arrows point like, and I took this from the report that you all have, so these arrows make it seem like these are all sequential, that's not necessarily the case, a lot of them are happening simultaneously, but the immediate next step is right here, these workshops, which I'll talk about in more detail in a minute, but we need to get, get a bigger team together of people from across the town, not just the DPW, so from other departments, maybe representation from either the town manager's office or select board or whoever, and dive a little deeper into some of the assumptions that we made that brought us to the numbers we just showed, because our numbers are probably on the more conservative side, and, and so we want to discuss those assumptions and get some feedback as to whether those assumptions are, are really what we should be going with. And I'll, I'll give an example of that in a minute, but that's the next step, is to kind of refine the numbers we have. In the report, there's a whole list of actions that we can take, one of them was to rec, to impose a moratorium, which we've already done, and there were several others, and those can happen simultaneously to the workshop. Then at some point, you know, we need to reassess the moratorium and decide if we want to lift that, and if that's the case, when that should happen. Simultaneously, we would be looking at some of our more longer-term actions, like do we need to increase our treatment plant size or something to that magnitude? And those are much longer-term actions that require a lot more work, but, but that's next steps that we'd be talking about. And then eventually, we'd get to a point where we jump to the next phase of the actual CWP, which is beyond evaluation and more into coming up with some solutions. These short-term actions here, there were, as I mentioned, half a dozen short-term actions recommended in the report, but these two are the immediate ones that will impact the more, you know, whether we can lift that moratorium. And so one is reevaluate the permitted flow assumptions, that's, that happens here in these workshops, and then if we make some changes and, and those things, those changes affect our, impact the bylaw or policies or regulations or anything else, we want to make sure that's updated, so when we lift the moratorium, we can put the rules out, everybody's clear on it, and we're not kind of unclear about what the next steps are, but we say, here's the changes, here's the updated policies that go with those changes, and lift the moratorium. So, and this is the last slide here, because I know you, I'm sure you have questions, I can, I can see it, I see it coming, but, so the next step is the workshops, and I just want to talk about what we see those workshops being and how that's going to impact in a positive way, I think, that chart I showed at the beginning. So we're just going to take a specific example, we'll take the category of single-family homes, and I'm kind of walking, walking us down the slide here, so category is residential single-family homes. Our current planning factor, when we calculate how much a home uses, is 110 gallons per day per bedroom. So the numbers on the chart that I showed previously and the numbers listed here are based on 110 gallons per day per bedroom. But what if we change that number to a different number, say 45? Then that changes things in terms of the numbers on this chart. So at 110 gallons per day times, let's just say, throw out a number of 1,000 bedrooms, that's 110,000 gallons per day of flow that we need to commit to those house, those thousand houses for, basically reserve that for those, the flow at the plant. If we change it to 45, same calculation, now it's down to 45,000. So the difference is 65,000, so for every thousand homes, we would potentially reduce that amount required by 65,000, and, and so that potentially has some significant impact on this number here, so that number would go down. So the amount we have committed would, would reduce, and that would get our overall number, if you remember at the beginning, the 4.6, that would get that 4.6 a little bit closer to the 2.5, which is what we want it to be. So these workshops are intended to zero in on each of these categories and have a discussion about, you know, 110 versus 45, or, or some other planning assumption that we use to calculate our numbers. There might be a different approach you want to take, or we might, might want to adjust our factors a little bit based on feedback from others, because, you know, we are the facilitators of getting flow from wherever it is to the treatment plant, but there's other entities like you and others who have interest in, in the actual flow and the development that they can do with that flow. So we need to hear, hear that input. And we've had that along the way to a degree, but we need to, now we have some more concrete numbers to work off of, and we can set some targets for ourselves that we want to get to, and so that process will help us get to that number. So I think the point is, you probably read the memo and said, man, 4.6 and 2.5 were posed, but that's not true. It's, it's really not, I'm somewhat optimistic about it in terms of where we are. I, I feel like, I mean, Joe could get up here and maybe he's not as optimistic as I am, but I, I feel like we're in a decent place, because we have a really good understanding of, of what's going on, and, and just that example of single-family homes, I mean, basically, if we did 110 to 45, you're cutting, cutting it in half, and you're gaining all of that flow back, which is, which is potentially a good thing. And you can apply a similar approach to other categories, and I think that 4.69, again, it's not going all the way to 2.5, it's not even going to 2.89, which is our flow limit to the plant, but it's going to reduce. And so what we want as an outcome of these workshops is what is the number on paper that we as a town are comfortable with, saying, you know what, that's good enough, and we, we think the level of risk associated with that number is acceptable to the town for us to keep, you know, doing what we want to be doing? And I think we can probably get to something that's a reasonable number, it's just going to require a little bit more work, and, and so we've got to, we're coming up with a game plan to get us to that point. On the previous slide, we talked about timeline, and it says, you know, moratorium lifted potentially in 2025, the spring, that is a, we just, we, we have to put boundaries out there, so we just have some things to work off. The original moratorium was established at a year, so we just followed that year mark to spring of 2025, but, you know, if we can figure this out sooner, then obviously we would come back to you and, and make a recommendation that's appropriate for, regarding the moratorium. But at least we have something that we can work off of and people are aware of, and we, we can basically go from there. But I guess my final point is that, which I basically said, I'll say it again, I, I think we're, it's not as bad as it might look on this paper, this, this is a really helpful document for us, and it really gives us the data we need to make some smart decisions for the town that are going to be, you know, decades worth of time we're talking about, and, and I think, I think we're ultimately going to come out in a good, a good spot for the town. I mean, I'm not saying we're not going to have to spend money way down the road to look at other options for treatment, but I don't think there's an immediate need, there's no immediate crisis, we're, we're in a good, a pretty good spot.
That's good to hear, thank you, Chris. I'll just open up to the board for questions and comments.
Also, sorry, Alan is also on the Zoom.
Yes, yeah. Alan, can you hear us? He's probably trying, yeah, okay, yep.
Yes, I can.
All right, great. Shaun, did you have a?
You can come back to me, one second.
So I know this will surprise you, I actually don't have any questions. Excellent presentation, really appreciate the example. I think this is, if we could snip this and post it online as part of an explanation, I think our business community would appreciate it, and I know many of our residents would. So thank you very much, and at this time, I'd love to hear from the, the rest of the board.
Likewise, I think the, the materials, the executive summary, whatever, was, was clear. You answered the questions by going through it, because of that table, I thought I understood it, and I think I got most of it, but this was better, and I agree, the, the example was, was helpful. I think it's, I'm glad to hear you're optimistic, seems to me a, a big difference and a big gap, but I see that example and, and moving that forward, you know, and I look forward to getting more updates on this, but as of this point, I don't have any further questions, I think it was a great update, so thank you.
Okay, that was quick.
You ready?
Yeah, just, no, again, thank you very much, the turnaround on this was fantastic, and I really appreciate this. So it looks like what you're recommending here, switching from 110 to 45, potentially is an example, is an example, sort of gets us to what our actual kind of flow is currently, right? And how long has 110 been, like, is that something that was, a measure that was created like 30 years ago and sort of has always been followed as a guideline, or?
I, I don't know for sure, but I, I'm sure we've been using that number for, for quite a long time, it's based on Massachusetts Title V, so that's related to septic systems. So, so for example, the reason why we can potentially propose something like that is because we, we know, we know in general, but we know more specifically from all the data we have now, that the Title V planning factors are significantly higher than actual uses, and, and our charts show that, and so, you know, for example, the 45 versus 110, that 45 is, is a number that, that we've come to as a likely number for single-family homes in Westboro, but it's validated, and, and we came up with that independent of this, but, of what I'm about to say, but there's other documents out there from kind of national statistics that show that number is a little more closely, the 45 number is a little more closely aligned with actual usage by, you know, families and so, or homeowners, so it just doesn't make sense for us to bucket all of that flow when we're not, it's never going to be used, but we're holding it against ourselves.
Yeah, and I imagine, you know, over the decades, all of our appliances have gotten more efficient, you know, there's just been a lot of improvements. I also imagine why Title V is septic, so you needed to make sure every septic tank wasn't going to, right, it was like no family could afford to go over, it wasn't an average, it was an absolute. Yeah, and, and that's like almost a million gallons right there potentially, so that's, I think, terrific, but I, I appreciate all the, the data you've provided. It was interesting to me on the actuals, you're predicting a projected, what's that, 60% increase in commercial industrial? Oh, and maybe that level of detail isn't in the greater presentation, so it looks like actual is currently 560,000, and yes, and you're predicting it to go to about 900.
Sorry, I was, where, where are we, which one are we talking about?
Third row down, columns five and six, so commercial and industrial actual.
Yes, and, sorry, the question was?
Is that sort of related to current projects or anticipated commercial industrial growth?
So column five would be what's out there being used right now, and column six would be what we project in terms of future requirements.
Okay, and, and that is not already permitted, but you're sort of anticipated growth over the next decade or two?
Yeah, and there's some planning factors associated with population, and there's numbers you use times population that gives you X amount of flow, and then there's other things associated with types of properties and their uses.
All right, thank you, no, this looks fantastic, I certainly, I think you're right, there are some opportunities to, to make some assumptions to hopefully bring these numbers down and dive into them further, but much appreciated, thank you both for your efforts here.
Can I ask a follow-on question? See now, I have one. To Shaun's on, on the, the commercial question, and although this would bridge into residential as well, so just recently, as you, you are aware, we had kind of the downtown planning discussion, and we talked about not only traffic, but how we might develop that, and, and so are your assumptions in the green, are they, are any of them sort of, I'll call it kind of pie in the sky, or is this a more, I'll call it realistic, not conservative, sort of estimate of future, like versus, we're going to revitalize the downtown, we're going to kind of bring in residential, we know we wouldn't be able to accommodate septic or unlikely there, and so was that project specifically factored, was that, I guess, was that growth specifically factored?
No, like, we didn't, we didn't project a future development that maybe we heard wind of or something like that. We, we went strictly off of data we have, population projections, which, which we didn't create, it's, I'm sure it's census data or something, and that's what drove us to the numbers we have.
Okay, no, I think it's just good for context, and that will, I think will be important as part of the workshops, like as much about assumptions that we have using the Title V and septic and residential, what other assumptions do we want to make about, you know, the growth of our town in various ways?
And, and part of that process will include, for the workshops, but probably something helpful beyond that, you know, when we put a number, like this single-family is listed here, pick one of those numbers, .07, I mean, nobody knows what that means, but that, we're going to equate that to a number of bedrooms, and then we know when our housing production plan says we need 600 bedrooms for the next 20 years, and we have flow that we can say is going to give us, you know, 800 bedrooms or 400 bedrooms, and we, and we can kind of, now we can more accurately collectively look at numbers and make smart decisions, because we can tie it to something everybody understands, which is a bedroom, versus, you know, a number.
Right, thank you.
I'll just open, Alan, I don't know if you're able, if you have any questions or?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks, Alan. I will just say that, and just an observation, first of all, thank you very much for doing this work, it's a lot of information, the town has been waiting for it, and I appreciate the prompt process that you went through to bring this back to the town, so thank you to you and the staff. The, your, your slide with the 100 and, 110 gallons, that kind of threw me back, I was like, that's a really big number per bedroom, so, but I have nothing to base that on, I'm not an expert in any way, I just thought it was large, so to me, it makes a lot of sense to, to go through this process to try to reduce that 4.62 number down to something that I think is more realistic, so to speak, so I think that's great. I don't really have any questions, it makes a lot of sense, I, I guess I'll just echo that, this information, I've been to the planning board meetings, and I know that there's a number of projects out there that are grandfathered or, you know, in that same ballpark, and they're asking questions about this, and they, and I know there's been some really good conversations between the engineering staff and them about how to approach that, so that's great, so I do think that getting this out there is, is really important to the community and for those businesses that are being impacted by this right now, so, thank you.
Chris, would it be possible, I know you have a sewer moratorium page on the DPW website, can we get this study posted there? I mean, it's public, so I think that would be helpful, because I'm sure you'll be asked for it, so, thanks.
It's surprising how many people actually ask, ask questions about this one, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Terrific, anything else? No, seeing none, thank you, Chris, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Joe, I know they already said they're done, but do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
No, please, you sure?
For the record, I share Chris's optimism about getting.
Great to hear.
Awesome, that's good news.
That's great.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Great, great update.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to agenda, agenda item number eight, implementation update for the information tech. the information technology assessment.
Yep. So, I've asked Mark Stockman, our IT director, to come and just give an update. As you know, we received a grant a couple of years ago to do an assessment of IT, which Mark presented to you, that report, as well as recommendations, which some of them have been implemented. Just wanting to give the community an update on that. And then, at our next meeting, we'll actually also get an update on the senior needs assessment.
Terrific. Welcome, Mark.
All right. Mark Stockman, your IT director. This is going to be a quick review of, or an update of the IT assessment and what we've accomplished so far. There were five high-priority initiatives, and I'll go through each one. So, our network upgrade, which consisted of a new firewall, gateway firewall, and core switches. This was implemented in April of two thousand twenty-three. We got a grant to cover the costs. It was installed as a redundant pair and improved security by integrating with the town's managed threat response. The core switches for the police station and town hall, this is still ongoing. So, we've had some supply line issues still. We ordered them, you know, back in May or June of two thousand twenty-three. We didn't get some of the parts until well into two thousand twenty-four. So, this project is still ongoing. That was paid with, for, out of a capital article. We have upgraded our backbone to ten gigabit, and it's improving performance and reliability. So, they are up and running. We just haven't fully migrated everything over. Our Microsoft three sixty-five migration and also the two-factor authentication, you know, this was a requirement that we knew we had to meet, you know, for our cyber insurance, but just as well as just improving our security. As part of the project, we added a new gov domain, westboroMA.gov, which also has been used for our website and really to anything that we're doing with, and the old domain still exists, but we have effectively migrated to the new domain. Meets our cyber insurance requirements. It's been a huge benefit for admin and for users. And we've integrated the, our managed threat response service with three sixty-five, and also the town's financial system authentication now goes through Microsoft three sixty-five. Our infrastructure upgrade. So, the virtualization hardware for police and town was completed in June of two thousand twenty-three. The server migrations for town hall were completed in August, and then the police were finished up in January of two thousand twenty-four. This improved performance and reliability by replacing older equipment. And we also have upgraded existing physical servers and moved them onto the virtual environment. So, we didn't have to purchase any new hardware. So, we already moved four servers, which would have cost a substantial amount of money. But now, we're on this new hardware, working very well. Backup and disaster recovery design with cloud storage. So, we now have a new government cloud storage service, and this was implemented in December of two thousand twenty-three. It provides additional redundancy via scalable cloud storage. So, we're at the beginning stages. Most likely, we're going to keep expanding that because that is working very well. And it gives us just more for disaster recovery and, you know, any kind of backup, maybe not so much archive, but it does meet all those other requirements. And it also, because it is a government cloud storage, it meets all the regulatory and compliance requirements for all levels of government. Staffing and organization. So, we have a new network and systems administrator hired in August of two thousand twenty-three. This has increased IT coverage and provides high-level help desk support, handles a wide range of IT projects, and has a significant cybersecurity role. You know, we're still a very busy office, but man, does this make a difference. We're actually moving at a better speed, being able to handle more. And then, the increased hours for the GIS administrator, that's starting right now in July of two thousand twenty-four. And then, the wages are coming out of a combination of the IT budget and also water, sewer, and stormwater enterprise, because she spends two days down at the DPW doing work for them. And of course, on the new stormwater utility. And then, of course, the increased demand for GIS, she's handling that. And the bonus for the IT department is it increases our overall IT coverage and help desk support. And then, questions, and I'm going to just skip over to, there were some other recommendations as part of the, you know, the assessment, and we have not tackled these, but one of them was extend into platform as a service, software as a service. The expectation is that probably our financial and assessing applications will go to the cloud within the next five years. And then, another recommendation was an on-premises, single sign-on RFID. The thinking is here that, you know, because we're implementing access control, that we would be able to use these with workstation-level readers. So, that's, that's something to look at in the future. Office three sixty-five backup, we do have an existing email archive, but as we start to expand into SharePoint and OneDrive, we'll want to back those up. And then, onsite and offsite replication, which was also another recommendation. Backups and disaster recovery service are adequate for now, but we will start to explore those recommendations as well. And so, I'm going to go back to questions, and that's, so, in general, a successful year and a half or two years, we've done, we've done well, and we've implemented a lot in a short amount of time.
Perfect. Thank you, Mark. Just open up to the board.
I would just say thank you for the update. These are always, it's always so great to see the progress. And, you know, it feels like a hundred years ago when we, you know, kind of went through the process of the articles at town meeting, the necessary appropriations. So, it's really helpful and really appreciate the time it goes into. Thanks to the department, thank you to the taxpayers to see kind of the progress. This work is, I know you value it, I value it, I think the board values it. It can be kind of one of those, really, do we have to spend the money so critically important, particularly around the disaster recovery and redundancy and supporting, you know, as the community has continued to expand through GIS and just technology. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a question. I agree. This has been great with the update and a lot done since we sat across the street, went through the assessment there. The, it sounded like from those high-priority items, there's only the one that we had the supply chain issues, and it's still ongoing. But I guess, is there anything that wasn't there, anything that we're still, high priority doesn't seem like it besides that piece, but is there anything high priority that we're still missing at this point in time?
Not from the IT assessment. Certainly, there's other things we're looking at, you know, we have a lot of policies to implement. We still have some other things that we're working on, on the security side of things. But as far as the IT assessment, we're in very good shape.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, thank you very much. And I'm reminded that, you know, last year, when a lot of this came up and you proposed it at town meeting, that there were multiple options for help desk support, and it had been recommended by the vendor that we go outside to do that. And instead, you felt better about handling it inside, and that would be a less expensive solution. Sounds like that's going very well. I just want to say thank you for, you know, sort of looking at the needs of the town and trying to manage those within a budget. So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alan, did you have any questions?
Just want to say that, you know, while these projects are bullet points on PowerPoint slides, many of them are actually extremely complex, particularly when you consider that these projects have to be done without disrupting services. So, kudos to Mark and his team for successfully migrating servers, virtualizing them, and making these systemic changes without impacting the quality of service to the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. I have been in your shoes in regards to doing migrations and splitting VLANs and all of these different things and building ESX servers. So, certainly technically challenging and difficult.
We had some bumps in the road, but we were over to overcome.
Well, it's great to hear.
I bet you're sounding wicked smart.
I'm loving this conversation. This is great. So, total geek out on this. But what I will say is, you know, I think it's fantastic. It's great to see this, that the town is rolling on successfully onto three sixty-five. I guess my question there is I'm looking forward to, so I'm hoping that it's not in the too distant future to move fully onto OneDrive and get off of Dropbox, you know, and also to take more advantage of the features of Teams. Coming from an environment where we heavily use Teams, it was great, it's a great tool, and I'm hoping that the town can take more advantage of that particular tool in the Office three sixty-five space. So, your comments?
Yeah, yes, we're definitely going to leverage our investment in Microsoft three sixty-five. It's, it's a work in progress.
I'll also just share for the sake of the board and the public that when we talk, when Mark talks about migrating off of physical servers onto virtual servers, it's not just a cost reduction in regards to the server, physical server cost. It's also a reduction in heat, it's a reduction in power consumption, it's a reduction in floor space. There's huge advantages to virtualization, and so, it's great to be moving forward that backup and recovery and things that you're talking about. In regards to backup and recovery, I just, I'm just curious, are we doing off-site tape backup, or is it, how, or how are you, how is that being done today? Is, I don't, I don't know if that's a cost associated, the town is burdening right now, or if it's onsite?
So, we have multiple redundant backups. We have some that are onsite to discs. We have some that are onsite to tape, and we also have cloud backups. So, we're doing a little bit of everything.
But it sounds like the plan is to kind of get to one solution that kind of meets the needs of all.
We are looking to expand our cloud backup capabilities.
Terrific, terrific. That's really my only comments. I really appreciate the work. I see, I see tremendous value in it. I certainly haven't heard from any staff that there's been any outages or any residents that there's been any issues. So, again, I'll echo what Alan said in regards to doing this seamlessly and not impacting the town. So.
Thank you.
That's a challenge.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Moving on to item nine, public art policy, Westboro Cultural Council.
Yep. So, as you see in your packet, back in two thousand twenty, the town was approached with a question about potentially putting a mural on West Main Street. And that was really the first time that we had started to think about public art and really what the criteria of that would look like and how we would manage it. You know, certainly, there, when you're talking about that, there's street closings, there's the type of paint that's being used, all of those things. So, really started to think about the need for a policy. So, I approached the cultural council and asked them to work on developing that. And we really have been working, they did a lot of research, which I think you'll hear about today, but really been working on developing that for a while. And I think that everyone's really excited for it to come to fruition. I know that there is a public art project that was recently funded through a grant, the cultural council, so sort of waiting for this policy. But Jenny Silverberg has been working on it from the cultural council, and so, she's here today to present it to you.
Terrific. Well, welcome.
Thank you so much. I just have one slide just to keep in mind as we're answering your questions or?
Sure. Just please introduce yourself to the community.
Oh, see, I've never done this before. I'm Jenny Silverberg, a part of the Westboro Cultural Council, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about the public or policy.
Thank you. Look forward to your one slide.
The one slide, that's all I think. It's just nice to keep in mind. My computer decides where, there we go. So, just, just some examples of public art. But really, I'm just sort of curious about what your thoughts are. I mean, as Christie said, we've been working on this for almost two years, and just really wanting to get it right. Also, open to feedback, but just, we're really excited about this and the way that public art can just really enliven, you know, our community in so many different ways, and especially, I think, aligns with the downtown project that's going on as well, too. So, public art could be a big part of that.
So, so you have the draft in your packet, but for the public, and Jenny, please jump in if I'm saying it wrong. So, the idea would be that the board would set up a public art committee, and that they would work on establishing a program, but also looking at sort of vetting public art opportunities. And this would be not a subcommittee of the cultural council, but upon recommendation of the cultural council. So, the cultural council, while the select board would remain the appointing authority for this group, the cultural council does have sort of points of engagement into the process. So, I don't know if you just want to talk a little bit about that, just for the public.
Yeah, I mean, where this is so new, we're just going to work together initially. And until that committee is formed, you know, it would be the cultural council who is responsible for sending things to you, and just to see if this is a project you want to do or not to. But then, once the council, the public art council has been, is up and running, then we will just sort of be in the, in the middle. And so, but we will receive every application that comes in, you know, we'll, and we'll make recommendations to the public art committee. And then, once it all feels right, we'll move it along to you.
So, there's also, in terms of funding for public art, there's a, it's noted in the policy as a public art fund, but the idea would be a gift account.
Yeah.
And so, that would be set up by the select board, as all gift accounts are, and then folks could donate to that, to that gift account. So, at this point, I don't think we've identified any operational expenses of having this type of program, but there would be an opportunity for donations.
I did see just on that, so Jenny, thank you so much. Thanks to whomever, I know this has been a long time in coming. You guys have said, you've already made that point. So, thank you for the persistence. It didn't just die, so we're in committee.
No, we're excited. Yeah, we're excited about it.
Couple of questions, just kind of around funding in general and how this works. So, I know that there is reference in Section D around the ability to hire an art consultant. To the larger question, though, so I know, I'm assuming that would not be out of the gate. That would be, that's sort of one of those, it could happen.
Right.
Okay. And so, funding would follow, for this committee would follow its normal process through town meeting article or something like that, is correct? If that were?
If that were pursued, I think the idea at this point would be the gift account, and then potentially grants through the cultural council, or other grants.
Yeah, or other grants, yeah.
So, I was wondering, that's kind of my next question, by establishing this policy, is there any work or reference that the town would be eligible for grants? Because now we have a policy. So, we've seen that sort of with like some of the green work we've done, because we did X, now we're eligible for Y, or what have you.
No, that's a great question. I would have to reach out to the Massachusetts Cultural Council just to get clarification on that.
Sure. Okay. And so, if someone wanted, and so, when it comes, you've got some examples here, public art, I don't know how these things come about. When an artist says, geez, I like to do, I have something, and I'd like to display it in your town, do they typically expect the town to pay for that display, or are they doing it as part of their sort of, this is my, you know, promotion and visibility to it? How does that work?
So, there's an application process that we have, which is pretty extensive. I don't know if you had a chance to see the document or not, but it's just, you know, they, artists can come to us with a proposal, but we can also use that to say, hey, we would like to do this kind of art.
Okay.
Yeah, so it can go both ways.
Okay, okay, understood. And the location, obviously, could be kind of anywhere in Westboro. Obviously, safety considerations would be taken into account, environmental, what have you, those are all part of the process.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
We're just at that point, sorry, just what I was, I think the way it ends, it's really about town property. So, that comes to us at the end, upon, as I read, upon recommendation, but again, I think everyone understands, but it's not like we're going to go put it in somebody's yard. It's got to be a town-owned property.
Right, right. Unless, of course, we did something like Porch Fest.
Right, just that as an example, right, right.
But they have to agree to that, we're not going to tell them that.
Yeah, exactly.
Everyone's porch will now be available. Yeah, no, I'm very supportive of this. I was on the diversity, inclusion committee when it came through initially, and that was at a very challenging time. It was kind of like, what do we do with this? So, I'm really so appreciative of the work that was done to get us to this point, and I don't have any changes, I like the checks and balances that you created in the policy, particularly where it's new and where this board will still be involved, and potentially at some point that takes flight and it kind of is on its own, so, well done.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on this. And I imagine it's a little bit of a labor of love doing this, so...
I'm ready to let him, like, leave the house.
You're not talking about Mark, right?
No, when I thought through this, and I was a little concerned, I mean, this is the same group that, you know, discussed a one and a half page flag policy over like three different meetings, so I was, I'm just saying, we can really get into the detail here and be very specific about what we're putting in here. So, and I think overall, I like it, and, I mean, I imagine it's, this is not its final form it'll ever be in, right? It'll be a little fluid.
Yeah, I think of it as like a living document, once we, you know, the committee gets in there and they're seeing what works and what doesn't work, you know, then we can adjust. But we needed to start somewhere, yeah.
And I was trying to come up with, and maybe some of the others, members of the board can help me here, where there was sort of a committee that kind of reported to another committee that reported to the select board. Do we have a bunch of those? I mean, most of them are sort of more direct. And so...
Youth commission, American commission, no?
No, they all go directly to you. Yeah, I mean, I think it is unique, but it's almost like a subcommittee of the cultural council, but rather than the cultural council having, because I think we talked about that, but rather than the cultural council having really the authority, which they would over a subcommittee, the select board does. So, I think it is unique, to your point, but I think it's, oh, do you have an example?
I was going to say, well, no, I was going to say, it's unique, but I think it's necessary because the cultural council could be funding the art.
Yeah, good point.
And so, this creates a check and balance for the, so the organization recommending to say yes or no, isn't involved in the funding. There's that independence, there's no conflict of interest, so.
And so, some things in here are up to the discretion of the cultural council, like how many members on the committee? And so, I mean, I think it's fine if they adjust the members of the committee, I think at some point, though, they need to state the numbers of the committee, right? Because if they say it's seven, then four have to show up. Like, if they say nine, but you only get five members initially, then everybody's got to come to every meeting. So, I think they just need to make sure the mechanism of how it works.
It says no less than five.
I think, though, that, the way that I read this, is that the cultural council will recommend members, but it's the board, it's the select board's committee, and so you would decide, you're establishing it and you're the appointing authority, so you would decide the number of members.
Got it, okay.
And out of the gate, we're saying no less than five. That's what the policy says.
Yeah, so I think...
And no more than nine.
Right, so I think ultimately, we would advertise for that committee and see what you get, and then maybe make some decisions about the size.
Make a determination, okay, okay. All right, that's, I'm always nervous about suggesting a certain number and not getting that number, and then having difficulty getting quorums, so things like that come to mind. Overall, I really like what you've put together here and, you know, sort of look forward to watching it blossom. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again, pass on. A couple of questions, I had, a lot of them have been raised here, so, raised and answered here, so that'll be good. I might, the consultant will take that off, because now I understand that. The public art fund, so we talked about that, would be a gift fund set up, but because this is a committee, and I guess, look at Christie, this means that they can't do any fundraising specifically out of this committee, correct?
Correct, no, they cannot fundraise.
Because it's a policy, so, okay. And then, I'll say, it's very extensive, so we laughed and joked about our policies and how long, so I think it's a lot there, but I think it goes back to that question of, there's probably going to be tweaks or things that may not, may be confusing, and I am not the expert at all, so I rely on you guys, so that's great. Can you just talk a little bit more, just so I fully understand it, so, and we've talked a little bit about this, so, we would appoint, I guess, maybe give an example of how it works. So, we're going to appoint this public arts committee.
Correct.
They, like, how does the process work with some public art? I think you said it comes to the cultural council, who will give it to the public arts, and it comes back to the cultural council, I read in there for approval of whether to take it to the select board or not? So, maybe just walk me through that.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, so, in its first iteration, I mean, we're all going to just be collaborative, and so, we'll be working with them, they'll be working with us, and then, once we have conversations about the piece of art, we'll bump it up to you.
Okay.
And then, at some point, I do think that they'll become their own entity, and then we can just focus on other things with the cultural council, but, you know, like I said, I just think of this as sort of like a living document for a little while, and we'll, you know, just keep tweaking, as we need to.
Perfect. Two final questions, and again, I'm sure it's my ignorance, but when I was looking at the Section F selection process, some of the proposal review, there's this concept of duplication to assure that artwork is original, and I look here, I mean, Porch Fest is not original, so it is a duplicate of, maybe a duplicate of something else, or I can think of other artwork or things that folks do, you know, that are individual in nature, because they're made by an artist, but they maybe look similar to something that is maybe in another community.
Right, right.
I have some thoughts of mine, but does that mean this duplication, you would evaluate it, but doesn't mean you will outright deny it, or?
No, no, I think it's more about not copying somebody else's piece.
So, it's really, okay, so if it's the artist, and the artist is making two of the same pieces, okay.
Right, exactly, exactly. But, you know, if you think about Northborough and how they had the door project, I don't know if you saw that, like, I mean, we could do that as well, but it would just, we couldn't have somebody duplicate somebody else's work, yeah.
Perfect, okay. And the final question I had was on the removal section, I'm glad it was in there, because we need to talk about that, but then, I just want to make sure from a legal standpoint that we're not taking on any liability, Christie, in that, in terms of, you know, we reserve the right to remove it, but then we talk about theft and it's stolen, I don't know if we want KP to take...
They already did. So, KP reviewed the policy for us, they actually had very few comments, they felt like it was very comprehensive. I do think that, as we've done with other things, when they're placed, when things are, items are placed on town property, we typically enter into some sort of agreement or license, so I think there's probably more to come once we get to that point in terms of just everyone understanding liability and things like that, but, which is, I think there's some mentions in the policy, you know, sort of as defined by the town manager, like insurance requirements, things like that, so there probably will be some more documents that we'll develop as we move forward. I know this project that they have on hold is just the painting of utility boxes, so that's a little bit...
Pretty cool.
Yeah, but, so that's different than taking up, like, on a whole piece. So, that, again, I think is part of figuring that out as we move forward and making sure that we get those things in place, once, you know, we've identified the types of artwork.
Perfect. That is all, Ed, I'm excited about this, I know it's been a long time coming.
Yes, it has. But it was worth the time.
This has been exciting, my questions have been asked and answered, so.
I guess, I just have one other thing, and I like everything that's in here, is everything in here, should it be, should some of it be a separate guideline and not part of the policy, or am I overthinking, like, the proposal review?
There you go, overthinking.
You know, we're going to get this done today, okay.
I do think that, I mean, we talked about the length of the policy, and it's lengthy, and sometimes that causes problems in implementation in terms of people just sort of like, I don't even want to deal with that. But I think because you have so many, you know, you have the cultural council, and you're going to have this other committee sort of helping people along, it might be that we synthesize down the document and create guidelines, but I think at this point, having it all in one place, since it's new, is helpful.
And I will say, because I did, I did note that this is one of our more lengthy policies, I assume this is going to be on the select board's policy page as ours, but I will say that I find it to be very thorough, and I was going to ask about town council having reviewed, so it's great that they've reviewed it and have much feedback. I think there are opportunities to tweak a few things in it, but that will come over time. I don't think that there's anything in there that's blatantly missing or an error, so I think that this is a really good starting point to begin this, and I'm very excited about it. My background's in photography, and I love art.
Fabulous.
So, and my daughter's an art teacher, so, big history in art in our family, so, very excited about this, I look forward to seeing it, you know, I was just thinking, I don't, you don't see any art around Westboro, so I'm really looking forward to it, so thank you for doing this and the whole team.
So, move to approve the public art policy as presented.
Second, any further question or discussion? Nope, seeing none, all those in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, thank you. Moving to item 10 letter.
Have Jenny present all of your policies.
Hey, you want to our flag policy?
Run, run away.
Go quick. Okay, so, item 10, letter of interest to use the state land for future fire substation. Welcome, Chief.
Welcome, thanks for having me, it's been a while.
Yes, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Have a good summer.
So, while Chief's getting set up, as you're aware and as has been acknowledged in our strategic plan, I think our, the master plan, definitely the capital plan, Fire Department organizational assessment, all the plans have pointed to the need for a fire department substation at some point in the future. Chief Purcell has really been pursuing several different opportunities or options, really trying to be thorough about identifying a location that works for the substation, but also that's a really good opportunity for the town. And so, I'm going to let him speak to the process that we're going to ask you to be a part of.
Hi, Patrick Purcell, serving as your fire chief. So, that kind of was the beginning of my presentations, so...
Yeah, great job.
So, just to repeat for my own pace here, so, on the current master plan, the previous master plan, the organizational assessment done for the fire department in 2018, your own strategic plan that you hired, you hired NOVAC for, that the department heads were instrumental in, all highlighted the need for a satellite fire station on the east side of Westboro. I came to the board in 2018-ish and asked for permission to start seeking land, and it's been extremely difficult until lately, and we've had a fair amount of opportunities, some didn't actually work out, most are not actually working out. And this site that I'm going to talk to you about tonight is actually the, has been our number one site since 2018, and we were originally told no when we pursued it through Mass DOT. Recently, I was at a meeting with Senator Moore and Barry Lorian, who's the Mass Highway Director for District Three at DOT, and this property came up again, and we struck while the iron was hot, and we talked about the opportunities for Westboro after the 495 and I-90 project was complete, because if you drive by there today, you see that it is being utilized, and they had some concerns when we first asked about using the site with our line of site issues, and I said, well, I think you fixed your line of site issues, because there's 30-plus tractor trailers going in and out of there every day without a problem, and he smiled and said, yep, we did. So, the site is on Computer Drive, at the intersection of Computer Drive and Connector Road. It is not listed in the assessor's map as far as with an address, it is in there with some demographics about the property, but not a physical address tied to it yet. It's about a five-acre piece, I don't know that we would necessarily get the entire piece, or if we would get what we need. It's a flat, there's no infrastructure below it that we have to worry about. Conservation is, the previous conservation agent did walk the lot, we were going to ask the current conservation agent to walk the lot again, and what we would be looking for is, which was recommended by Mr. Lorian at DOT, was a letter from the board, the town manager and myself, just, and here's what they were looking for, that Westboro was looking to use state land for the purposes of supporting public safety, we were looking to improve our response times protecting critical infrastructure in that area or town, we're looking to reduce our response times going to the east side of Westboro, and also, at the same time, in exchange for them giving us state land, they recognize that if you follow us on social media, we're on a highway pretty much every single day at least once, whether it's 495 or the Turnpike. So, the faster that we get there, the quicker that the firefighters can secure that location, protect people that are injured in a crash, resolve the crash and get off the highway, and, you know, reduce our time and exposure that we're up there. The longer it takes us to get there, the longer the traffic is backed up. If you know anything about the construction of the Mass Turnpike, that road was built initially to promote interstate commerce, so when we, every time we closed the Turnpike, the state police notified the governor's office, and then there was pressure on us to open the Turnpike. So, we do work, try to get there as quick as we can and work as diligently as we can to support the Commonwealth. This will certainly make us better at our jobs. And then, the last thing I wanted to throw out, why, another key piece that I think is often overlooked is, we improve the quality of life in downtown Westboro if we get a fire station on the east side. We go through this rotary with at least one piece of apparatus 5,375 times a year right now, light sirens, and I think that about 50% of our call volume is on that side of town, and by having a fire station up there, I think you would notice a drastic reduction in noise downtown, and also in the immediate area around our station with the, you know, apparatus doors going up, down, up, down, like, between going up and down, every time we come and go, 50 to 100 times a day. So, I think this is a good project for Westboro, and I guess I was looking for your support to, I would be happy to work the manager's office and craft that draft letter for everyone to review, and then if we were all in agreement, then we could sign it and send it off, and I think this is just step one of our three. DOT has assured me that they would also write a letter if they received ours, saying that they would support the project moving forward, to do a long-term lease with Westboro for that land, and then the real estate division of DOT would work with us to make that happen.
So, it would be a lease?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't know, because I saw...
I think historically, what they've done is like 99-year leases on property.
So, a land lease.
A land lease, a land use lease, not...
Yeah, no, I understand, yep.
So, the way that the motion is drafted was that we would, you would authorize us to draft the letter, and then you would authorize Patrick to sign on the board's behalf, so it wouldn't necessarily come back before the board, but it would certainly include all of the things that Chief Purcell has identified.
Can I just, I forgot one thing, if I could just bring it to your, just for your own situational awareness, so, in the Senate right now, it's been moving its way through the legislature pretty quickly, actually, is Senate Bill 2547, which is a municipal and public safety building authority, the creation of one, which operates similarly to like what the libraries have, and if we could, yep, that's me, so if they, if we do this letter and we move forward and we secure that, and we can get a site shovel ready, then I think we would be in a great spot to petition, maybe one of the first communities to try to go after that funding, if possible.
I'm sorry, what was it funding for, Chief? I missed it.
For the creation, for the, it's like for libraries and schools to support the construction of municipal buildings as well as public safety facilities to include police and fire stations. So, I think that they typically feed it to people that are shovel-ready, and that's kind of where I'm moving towards.
That was Bill 2457?
Senate Bill 2547.
2547. Some of us are going to be reading that tonight.
Let me make sure I'm right.
It was also...
I'm sorry, 2457.
It was also part of the Municipal Empowerment Act that was brought forward by the governor.
Terrific, any further questions?
Yeah, just a question, Fred, you may have it, but maybe more planning, but, so as you said, that site is state-owned, what does that mean from a zoning perspective? I mean, yes, leasing it, but then building, are we, is it similar to municipal in terms of setbacks or all that, or?
Well, so, it's zoned, I believe, highway business, correct, right now? Is that correct?
Must be, it must be zoned, state-owned or... Must be, it must be zoned, state-owned or?
Fred Lanardo, Community Development Director. So, I'd have a look at the map, but presumably it's state-owned, so it'd be zoned state. We don't have jurisdiction on the zoning for that, if that makes any sense. Maybe it doesn't, but.
So, it's probably something that we have to, we would need to work through if we're leasing, I'm sure. I'm sure it'll be worked out, but that was, you answered my question, which was, that's probably not zoned right now besides state.
Correct.
We don't, yeah, okay.
I think for a reference point, I think you could turn to the town of Shrewsbury. I think they had a, a similar opportunity where they took advantage of fields on Lake Street to build the Beale School. So, I, I think this is a similar, similar style project to, to that.
I'm fully supportive of this. This is, we've talked about it for a long time. I think this is a great opportunity to at least try to move this forward and do those next steps and, as you outlined, so.
Ditto, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Chief, very supportive of it. I guess my question is, very supportive of the location, but I am just curious, there's an equally sized location on the other side of the highway, it's further away from the residential neighborhood that's there. It's also closer to the entrance that brings you out onto Route Nine, that takes you directly onto 495. So, I would imagine your response time would be even quicker. I'm just curious as to, was there a logical reason choosing that side versus this side?
If my memory serves me correct, it's been awhile since I've been up there, but I believe it was a topography. I think their lot was, had a slight slope to it from, from west to east, but generally speaking, the other, it was, it was a pretty near-perfect lot, to be, to be honest.
Okay.
And I think there was a greater amount of room for access to and from the lot as well.
Yeah, two sides.
Yeah, I'm just envisioning that there might be, I, I know in your, your pictures, and I think you've put them together, you know, there might be needs to also do some improvements on that little triangle place near Windsor Ridge there, that intersection right there. I think you were showing the driveway coming out onto, onto Connector Road and so.
So, I don't think we would be doing that. I think that, so that, that part of your packet that was supplied was, Amazon provided mitigation to the town of Westboro and they paid for a feasibility, feasibility study and a site, a site analysis. And the architect just put that there. But we would be more looking to put it on Computer Drive. If you look at the screen above, like, it's right, right in between Computer and Drive, the access point probably right there, cause it gave a good amount of space between.
Either side, you don't want a site type thing.
Yeah, just to get away from the intersections there.
Got it, oh, okay, understood.
Makes sense. Thank you, Chief. Anything else? Nope, nope.
No, I just, I would just say, I think my take is, you're absolutely right, that if I think about it, the slope on that other side is much different. This is a much flatter.
Yeah, I think it's sloped like right down towards the highway. And this is just a, it's been since 2018, but then conservation agent, I walked that lot as well as some other public works employees. And it was, it's a pretty perfect spot for, for us.
Great, terrific.
I was gonna make the motion.
Please go for it.
So, I move to authorize the fire chief and town manager to finalize and transmit a letter of interest related to use of state land for a future fire substation and further to authorize the chair to co-sign on the board's behalf.
Second.
Third.
Any further conversation, discussion about the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Great job. As all these, I just wanted to thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eleven, amend classification plan and job description for separate building commissioner and community development director position and increase fire lieutenant
I'm just gonna pass out an updated agenda item form, which looks like I'm missing, I'm missing one, but it just has, just updated motions, so.
You can show and I can share.
Sorry about that. So, there's, there's, so this agenda item includes two actions. So, the first is to separate the building commissioner and community development director position. As the boards are aware, we did have a warrant article in, on the town meeting warrant to update, amend the general bylaws to allow us to separate the position. I just wanna note that at the time, we, we were not considering doing that immediately. Also, the, the way that the bylaw was drafted, it did say that the community development director may also perform. So, it was actually written a little bit different than the finance director position, where we really needed that change to occur before we could separate. This one would have allowed us to separate, but we wanted to make it cleaner. We wanted it to be consistent with our finance director position, related to that warrant article. So, so the request before you is to, is to remove the, the building commissioner from the community development director position. When we created that position a few years ago, we had a building commissioner, we had a conservation director, and then we had the economic development coordinator who reported to the town manager, and we did not have a sustainability person. So, we moved, we consolidated all of those land use departments under the community development department. This was a recommendation of the staffing study that we had completed. The staffing study did articulate that the town could elevate one of those positions into a community development director position as a cost savings measure. But ultimately, we were trying to create sort of that senior level position, the community development director, and, and obviously maintain the other departments below it. As, as we learned when our former finance director retired in October, it is very difficult to sort of maintain that senior management level position as well as one of the responsibilities of the, the department has below you. So, just like we needed to separate those two positions, the finance director and the town accountant, we, we feel that it's important to separate the community development director with the building commissioner at some point. We do feel like that, that point is now, because we, we actually have gotten to a point where we feel that we could move up our assistant building commissioner into the building commissioner position and allow our community development director to focus on all of the other work of that community development department in managing all of those departments that I just mentioned. And that it would really create that succession plan that was identified as a need in our 2018 strategic plan. So, so that's the request before you. Again, we're not asking for any additional funds, because the idea would be that we would actually, given where we are right now with our level of activity in that department, we would be able to hold the assistant building commissioner position vacant for a period of time. And so, we could use the funds that are currently in the budget to elevate someone into the building commissioner role. And Fred Lanardo is here also, who can speak if you have additional questions.
The board, questions, comments?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I certainly am aware of the changes we, we've made, Christie, that you've provided. I, I have to be honest, I'm a little surprised to kinda see this coming now. And while that doesn't mean I'm not supportive of it, I think I'd, I'd like to understand sort of in a qualitative way, quantitative, excuse me, way, like, what's this, what's gonna happen? I think we're also seeing potentially some other changes in econ, economic development, right? So, I, I don't know, I just, I guess, I need to sort of see some numbers that sort of justify why we're doing this and, as well as thinking about, okay, we're gonna move an assistant person into the building commissioner, but yeah, we have people doing that, both of those jobs now. So, I, I just need to see the quantitative kind of data around it a little bit more than what you're presenting here tonight.
Okay, so what we, so just, because we hadn't speak to it, so what you have in your packet is, since 2019, the number of permits and building inspections that have gone through that department. What we're trying to show is that there has, there was an increase and now we are seeing that slow, which is why we feel like this is the ti, this is a time where we could function with just the building commissioner and the community development director. I think that one of the things that we've talked about a lot is sort of having a building commissioner as the community development director is actually, is, is a unique, it's a unique position. And so, typically, in a community development director, you would see someone with a planning background or other sort of land use background. And so, while I think we're well-served by our current employee in that position, you know, if, once that employee moves on, I think that we would likely see someone with, with more of a land use background. And so, what we don't wanna do is be in a position that we were in with the finance director, where now we're scrambling to, to reorganize that department. Because if you put someone, say a planner, into the community development position, you won't have that building commissioner position at all.
Looking at, back at the strategic plans and, and the information in the packet, I think this is act, I agree it's actually a good time to do it. And it's pretty strategic. And if you think about the workload, you know, you know, our current community development director is managing multiple functions while doing, you know, commissioner work. And then you've got, and then relying on the assistant commissioner, because he can't be the full-time building commissioner. He's got other responsibilities. And so, this is more acknowledging as well that coordinating community development and all the functions that are now under that role is strategically important to the town. And allowing, you know, the assistant building commissioner to really say, okay, I'm gonna handle all of this work now, seems like a more, a cleaner distribution of responsibilities and will allow focus on, you know, the strategic. And we think about the planning work that's happening, you know, even related to wastewater and stormwater management and, you know, additional zoning changes and the housing bond bill and what that might impose on the community. There, there's a lot of strategic issues that we're facing that we're gonna need time and attention. And so, this'll provide that capacity.
And it also creates enhanced support for the bill, the assistant building commissioner moving into that building commissioner role with the current building commissioner being their direct supervisor, which we would not have if Fred were to retire. And then, we had to sort of scramble to create all of these positions.
Don't you dare.
Yeah, if I may, Fred Lanardo, Community Engagement Director. So, I'm not planning to retire tomorrow, but I am planning to retire at some point in the future, not too distant future hopefully. But to your point, Shelby, specifically, is that the timing is, is, and granted, I did come to the manager with this proposition more recently, but the timing is such that the understanding was for at least fiscal year twenty-five, it wouldn't replace the assistance position. We just happen to be in a lull, especially on the commercial side. We've worked out some of the inspectional numbers and they're, because of the way the economy is right now, a lot of our bigger commercial projects haven't gone forward. I don't anticipate that to be the case in a year or so, certainly. So, in a year or so past, we wouldn't have had that luxury either. There would have been too much demand on, on that particular position in that office. But we just happen to be timing-wise at kind of a, as I said, a very strange place in the economy. We haven't seen this in many years, where we've had this kind of a lull.
Can you just describe for everybody sort of the, the makeup of the, the building department as it stands right now?
The building department itself has the building commissioner, the assistant commissioner, two part-time building commissioners, I'm sorry, building inspectors, my apologies, a full-time plumbing inspector, a part-time electrical inspector, and then administrative assistant as well.
So, I mean, I think, I agree, I think it does make sense to me, one, that we separate these roles, right, community development director from building commissioner, with you then focusing your efforts as community development director. And then, I, I think, I guess it would be unfair for then the assistant building commissioner to be in charge of the department and yet not be the building commissioner. Like, if we're asking them to take over the department, they should become the building commissioner. And, I mean, if it's feasible within the, you know, this year's budget, you know, I would, I would be okay with that.
Yeah, I would just say, I'm, I'm supportive of it for the reasons stated. I think the one other thing I'd say is, I think that as we've talked about succession planning, but we've also talked about providing opportunities and, and career pathing, I think opening this up, that not tying it to the building commissioner, means that other folks within that department potentially could be ones that would move into that. So, it could be a conservation director or an economic development coordinator, a sustainability coordinator. We don't know where it's going, but I think it provides more opportunities. It may help us as we recruit for those positions, because it's almost a ability for some career path, that right now, the way it's structured, it's basically, you have to be building commissioner skillset to be the, the community development director. So.
Good point.
Supportive of it. I, I will highlight, yeah, it's one year. I mean, we've always talked about this and just so the public would know, that, that doesn't mean that down the road, we would not look for funding to fill the assistant building commissioner if the need arises. So, it's not a, it's not that it's done and we've wiped off the board. I think that's still just something, it's, it's the ability to pay for it this year, but in the future, there could be costs associated with it. But even with that, I am supportive of this recommendation.
Thanks, any other comments? I just had one question, Fred, just, just to educate me a little bit. What, in orders of magnitude, what is the level of workload between a commercial permit and a residential permit? Is it a tenfold? Is it a fivefold? I'm just averaging out. I'm just curious, cause when I see these numbers, I'm trying to correlate them to say, you know, where is the bulk of the work and how does, how does that play out? I don't know if you have it.
Well, so typically, residential inspection or residential, residential permit would require two to three inspections. If you're talking about inspections alone, a, a new house would be the most, would be typically six inspections from start to finish over a period of time. A commercial property, if it's a new structure, you're talking dozens and dozens of inspections. A fit-up could be a half dozen, depending on the extent of the fit-up. So, as I said, unfortunately, we're in a lull where we don't have a lot of new commercial structures going up. We have a few, but they're smaller. We haven't had some of the bigger ones on Alder Street. Certainly, we don't have the one at forty-four-hundred imminently starting. Those actually, there's periods of time where, where either myself or Mr. Haslett will inspect weekly for a number of weeks. So, I mean, we charge a lot of money, but we also give them a lot of service on the commercial. And so, commercial inspections are much more intense.
Yeah, I was imagining so. That was my only question. Thank, thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I think Fred, appreciate your comments and that of fellow board members. I am, I am personally not ready to make this decision tonight. I feel like, you know, this information came to us in, like, it's been coming, but I, I feel like we're sort of rushing this and I'm just not seeing the need to do this right now. I mean, I think we've got a, you know, a potential classification plan that's clearly already been, a change that's been drafted and that we could act on should we need to pretty quickly. We meet, you know, a couple times a month. I, strategically, I support it. I get what you're saying in the comments. I'm just not feeling this sense of urgency and so for that, I'm not gonna support that, this vote tonight. Ultimately, I may be in the minority, but I just, I feel like we're just sort of rushing it. And I think we had lots of conversation in the past budget cycle around, you know, increasing the headcount in our finance department, albeit we understood kind of why we were doing that and there was, there was a major change. But there was concern about creating more kind of top-heavy organization and not, you know, functional roles or whatever the right term is. So, I just don't wanna rush to this decision. I don't feel like the need to do it. And so, for that, I will not be supporting if we move forward with the motion.
And I would just comment that I, I, I agree with many of your comments. I've been struggling with this one. The urgency piece of it, I don't see it either, but I also don't see any reason to hold off. And I think other board members and Christie and Fred have made a, a compelling argument. I was kind of in the fifty-fifty on supporting this change. But we also heard from the town that, that they see a need for this. So, you know, I wanna do what the town says here and support it. So, that's why I'm gonna support. So, that's why I'm going to support it. I think Ian's point earlier about the, the path for future employees, I think that is a really important thing. Not that I can envision right now, today, that in the next foreseeable future, that we would see somebody who is not a building-oriented individual necessarily moving up to being the department head for this, but, but that opportunity would exist. So, that's, that's really good, and I think that is a really powerful message to the rest of the staff. So, for that sake, again, I'm not concerned about the urgency. I do agree with you, we could approve this in two weeks if we wanted, but if not now, why not, not, why not now if not later, you know? So, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, so I, I guess I would just say, I, with all due respect, I don't know that the, the presentation has been compelling to me. We do have some data here. I don't know, you know, comparatively, I mean, clearly the numbers show like, what, 2009, I just moved off the page, but 2019 was a huge year, you know, and then we saw residential numbers went up in '21, probably post-COVID, people are like, building out their houses, doing everything. So, I see the fluctuations. I don't have a quantifiable sense of what is the impact on you, Fred, your assistant today, the other inspectors in a totality of kind of the department. And so, I'm hesitant to sort of rush and be like, this is the solution. I just don't feel like, I mean, again, strategically, I think it's aligned with a lot of work that we've done across other departments. I just, I feel like we're, you know, I, I just, I don't, I don't get, I don't get the rush. And I do believe, and I do believe, once we create the classification, then, I mean, that need to fill that assistant position is going to come faster than we all anticipate. So, that's, that's, to me, I'm sort of like, let's just kind of put the brakes on here.
I am very worried about the top-heavy piece of it, but I will say that, you know, when I look at these numbers, they don't, they're not, that is not a compelling argument to me. Over the, since 2019 to 2024, even though we're not through the year yet, when you look at these and you average them out, there is no really any trend. There's years that are to drop and it's gone back up. I mean, there's, there's, it's been fairly flat.
We're, we're not doing this because...
I, that's exactly the way it was going.
The permits and inspections are going up.
Right.
We're doing this because when we created the community development director position as joint with the building commissioner, we did that so we wouldn't be adding headcount at that point in time.
Yep.
With the understanding that that was interim, and that long-term community, and as we moved other functions under community development, we would need a dedicated community development coordinator. We're at that, I believe we're at that point in time. It's coming to us now because the current rate of activity in the building department is such that we can make the change without adding staff and let people move into the new roles and build out the strength of the department. It's almost, it's, it's actually this lull in the commercial side and the lag in the market there is working to our advantage. Where if we wait a year, if we wait a year and a half, and we say, okay, now we've got an issue, and I think the lesson we learned from the finance department is it's better to have this in place before changes happen rather than scrabbling, scrambling to do it after changes.
Well, then that's what, I just wanted to jump in because I, I hear the words urgency and rush, and I, I did not intend to characterize this as an, as an urgent need or something that we needed to rush into. I think to what Alan was just saying is that we don't want to be in that position, because when we were in that position, we were, we were asking for additional funds in the middle of the year. We were going to finance committee for reserve funds. We were trying to plug holes with contractors in order to get functions that the town required, like a building commissioner, you know, plug those holes so that we can, we can make all these changes, and we don't want to be in that position. So, so it's exactly, you know, I should let Alan do the presentation because it's exactly what you're saying, is that this is, this is a moment in time where we feel like we can do it without adding headcount, and we can be proactive, and we can meet some goals. I mean, I know that I've also heard the terms top-heavy a couple times. I mean, not just in this section of the staffing study, but throughout. The idea was that our, our charter initially had a span of control for the manager that was just unsustainable. I mean, every department head reported directly to the town manager, meaning that the town manager was in charge of everything that happened in, you know, from conservation to economic development, and I, and I get it, I know that's my job, I don't want to sound that way, but I, but that means that every, the department heads at every level had one person as opposed to having someone at the top of that division that can really help focus and coordinate those activities in that space of service, and then report up to the town manager. And really, the staffing city called for that narrowing of span of control in order to be more efficient and productive.
And I, and I completely get that point, and, and I understand the, the, the pain that it causes. The staffing study was done in what year?
2020.
2020. So, it's been a couple of years through COVID. We've had a number of tax increases in the town, significant tax increases, and I'm just more sensitive to the fact that every time we talk about something like this, we are talking about truly another position in the town, which is potentially well over $100,000 for this type of position, and as we know, that increases the tax bill. So, that's why it's just really important, I think, to, to consider that piece, is to understand whether or not is the best idea to actually put this in place, or I think, I don't know who said it earlier, but is there a need to provide more worker bee, so to speak, positions at a lower cost that could do that additional work and alleviate that work off of that existing leader to, to make that happen? I don't know. I mean, this is a strategic decision in this department. We're doing the same thing with inside of, you know, the finance department, and, you know, again, I'll say that I heard from the town that they, they supported this, that's why I'm going to support it, and, and I think there are valid reasons to support it. All have already been said, so you had a good point.
I was just to say, with respect to, you know, hiring, I don't use term worker bee, but you know...
I know, it's not the right term, it's not a good...
Direct, you know, direct service versus supervisory staff or leadership staff. Right now, you have the community development director who's also the building commissioner. So, if you say, you know what, let's hire more assistant building commissioners and more inspectors, as, as future workload goes, that's great. Now, the community development director who's a building commissioner has to spend more time managing more people and coordinating more activities. You're pulling, you're pulling that dual role.
Alan is a director of an organization that had 35 people underneath me. I mean, I, I'm not sure what other people's experiences are, but I actually managed projects as well as managed a staff of 35 people. So, that, I, I don't buy that argument at all.
Okay.
Okay? I, I expect people to be doing dual roles in a management position.
But were you managing four other departments too?
That's not what's happening here.
Yes, it is. The community development director oversees...
No, no, they're managing four other different parts of the same department.
No. Conservation. They're managing multiple departments within a division. The community development director is managing...
A division is very big work. That, to me, sounds like we're talking about hundreds-persons organization when we're talking about a division. This is an organization, as Fred just listed out, of less than a dozen people, less than 10 people.
That's only the building department.
Okay, so add in the others. We're talking about another half, less than half a dozen individuals.
With very different expertise, very different functions, and skills.
And I would add, and I would add, a lot of board and responsibilities that, that create infinitely more complicated relationships that aren't, that aren't direct reports.
I'm just saying that I think it's completely in the realm of possibility to be doing, as a leader of a department at this level, to be doing both roles. But I do support this change, again, I'll say, because of the desire of the town.
Can I just add? I know there's also talk about, you know, sort of the fact that the assistant building commissioner will be asked to be funded and then we'll have to, I mean, that's really fully at the board's discretion, right? Because even though the classification still exists and the job description still exists, we, we would have to support the funding of that position. So, I, I understand that, you know, you can see, and Fred admitted, that we would be coming back at some point to ask for that, but, you know, at that point, it's, it's those factors that would determine that funding.
So, it would help, be helpful to me, and one of my questions as we were chatting, is to understand kind of how long would, do we anticipate based on the current lull, based on whatever projections we might see that we would be holding off before we would be looking to hire just ballpark an assistant building commissioner? Are we talking eight months, 16 months, 24 months, like, if we were to make this change? What?
Well, it would be within a budget process, so it would have to be the year. I mean, it would, I think that's what Fred...
There was, there was no anticipation of doing it in fiscal year 25, certainly.
Okay.
So, through the end of July, June 30th of 2025, there'd be no request for additional staff.
Okay.
And depending on how the economy shifts and the workload shifts...
Right.
Down the road, we can assess whether it's time to fill the assistant position or to have additional inspectors, right? You know, it's sort of what's the work, what's the work that's going to be needed to be done at that point in time?
And this position is as well to begin that job at that point in time, so...
Sure.
Well, if I'm, if I may too, and I, I apologize if I haven't been clear on certain things. Since taking over the position of community development director, Mr. Heslett has stepped up in his position. He doesn't have the ability to make certain decisions.
Okay.
That's part of the lack of being the full building commissioner, and he still needs some work on the zoning end because that's not something he does on a daily basis, albeit he does make zoning decisions. So, those are some of the intricacies of the position that he does not have, and, and the hope is to mentor him, as I have for the last few years. So, there's been some projects that have taken my attention away from the building commissioner's position, one being, we've just started the Otis Street project, which we're talking over $5 million in, in funding that has been funded, and we're still looking for a million and a half that the manager has been very instrumental in trying to gain. But the, the ability to do that has also taken a lot of time from, specifically from the community development position to gain that additional funding that we're still seeking and we're still working on. So, there's, there, and we're just finishing up the Flanders project, I'll hopefully give you an update soon on that. So, some of those duties were things I didn't do as the building commissioner, and Mr. Heslett's not able to do. So, and also, the, the economic development portion of this has taken up a lot of that time. So, all those positions, again, without getting into the daily operations, that we, we may have had to do the onboarding for those other positions, conservation, EDC, sustainability. So, anyway.
Yeah. And I, and I think you, so thank you for the clarification, because I didn't think about that as, so is, is that limitation today a function of the job description that he can't do it, or is that a skillset that he needs to develop? Or both?
It's, it's a little, the skillset is starting to come along, but some of it's the job description, that I am, is part of the building commissioner, you're also attached with the zoning enforcement.
Yep.
So, at the end of the day, even though he makes zoning decisions, it's up to me to make the final ruling on those.
Sure.
So, those are responsibilities he gets involved with, but he actually can't make in his position as the assistant.
Fred, do you, do you find that as, because this was one of my concerns, so, or preview the question, it was one of my concerns when we changed your job description and made you community development director, that there could be a potential conflict perceived or otherwise. You're doing community development, sort of big picture stuff, and yet you're the building commissioner, right? And you've got kind of enforcement. So, you're sort of in the, there's a little bit of a softer development side here, and then you got kind of your interpretive role. Have you found that you've been in challenging positions where you feel like that split would have made it a lot cleaner to be able to say, this is my role versus I'm wearing two hats?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a valid point, a valid statement, that you do get put in an awkward position sometimes because it's enforcement, but you're also, the community development director's trying to push these projects through.
Yeah, right. You're trying to develop work with people, and you...
Yeah, you're right.
They're going to have to run into your office on the other door and get, you know, some sort of approval, and you're like, well, yeah, yeah.
That's true. It does become awkward because, as you mentioned, I have to put on a different hat, so...
Right, right.
Trust me, the enforcement end of it is not, as the chief will attest to, and deputy chief, it's not our most pleasant task to be doing on a daily basis, certainly.
No, no, and that was, that was, again, way back when, whenever we made the change, that was always my concern, that, you know, you almost, I don't want to say you have to be in a sales rule in that, you know, but, you know, you need to be kind of out saying, Westboro's a great place to come, and of course, we have all these rules, but I'm going to welcome you and embrace you, and I've got this, you know, I've got the other Fred over here that's going to do all the enforcement, right?
Yeah, I, I would say when I took the position, I sadly underestimated the amount of time that would go into my new position. Sadly underestimated.
Sure, sure. Well, and it, and, you know, anyway, I'll make my point that I also recognize, as fellow board members have made here, of what has changed. We've added sustainability...
Correct.
Conservation, I think rightfully so, has come under your jurisdiction, so, you know, those changes make sense, so...
I would move to approve the amendment to the class...
One second. Sorry, there's a brief update.
Okay.
And then, yes. Move to approve the amendment to the classification plan to create a separate building commissioner position subject to impact bargaining with the union related to filling the position. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, we'll move on to...
Opposed.
Oh, yes, all those opposed, sorry.
Thank you for your time.
A little bit of uncharted territory there. Thanks.
And then, the, the job descriptions also need to be, we just be looking for a separate
vote to approve the amendments to the job descriptions included in your packet.
Yep.
Oh.
So, there's two. There's amendments to the existing community development director position. That really just strips out anything that's specific to building commissioner responsibilities, and then there are a few, I think, minor amendments to the building commissioner job description.
I move, we approve amendments to the building commissioner and director of community development job descriptions as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
The second part of this agenda item is to amend the classification plan to create the additional lieutenant positions following discussion with the union. This is something that Chief Purcell had talked about during the FY25 budget process. Any costs related to the increase in lieutenants was budgeted for and approved in the FY25 budget. Just as a reminder, this is not an additional headcount, but rather is moving firefighter positions into lieutenant roles.
Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Hi, Patrick Purcell, City Fire Chief. No, I didn't have anything else to add. I think I presented this, just if you wanted me to jog your memory, in front of the board in December and at the budget summit in January, and then again, a town meeting in March. So, I, I think I would be repeating myself, but already approved in the budget. We knew we were going this direction to increase supervisory capacity on the suppression pieces at the, at the department, and it's just important for safety.
Okay. Any questions or...
I would move to approve the amendment to the classification plan to create additional lieutenant positions following discussions with the union.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Chief, for Christine Kim. All right. Moving on to item 12, request for new appointments and reappointments. Let's pull this up here. I see a number of appointments. Would anybody like to make a motion and then we can discuss?
Okay. I'll take a, I'll take a shot. Gerald Kwee Sasrihassa Talahala and Madhu Talahala as associate members to Sustainable Westboro for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Kwee, Talahala, the Talahala family as well to be willing to serve on the Sustainable Westboro Committee. We are always looking for people with more insight and passion about that topic, so thank you for, for joining. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor? Terrific. Who wants to take the second one?
I'll do it. I move to appoint Karen Chapman to the Economic Development Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Just want to thank Mrs. Chapman for being willing to serve on the EDC. Just want to thank Mrs. Chapman for being willing to serve on the EDC. Very hugely important committee in our town, so fantastic to have you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'll move to appoint Jean Granfield to the Active Safety and Transportation Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Any second?
Oh, second? Pardon me.
Sorry.
That's all right. Any questions on the motion? I'll just thank Mrs. Granfield for joining the Act of Transportation Safety Committee and we look forward to seeing her being involved in that, so thank you. All those in favor? All right, terrific. Moving on to item 13, request to concur with the town manager's reappointment of Innesmit, Innesit Williams to the Disability Commission. Kristi, if you want to.
I move to concur with the town manager's reappointment of Innesit Williams for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Williams, for being willing to serve on that again and look forward to again seeing you as part of that committee. All those in favor? Terrific.
I, I would just like to apologize for any names I pronounced incorrectly. That is, I will do better. Thank you.
And we'll move on to item 14, request to approve the meeting minutes of June 25th, 2024 and July 1st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments about the minutes, changes, modifications?
Thank you, Cela.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Thank you, Cela, for doing the minutes. Always thorough as, as usual, so thank you. All those in favor? Terrific. Item 15, town managers' report, including but not limited to update on current projects and initiatives and department updates.
I will try to speed through this since we didn't have, we only have the one meeting in July, that's very lengthy. So the update on the community center, we talked about at the beginning that there's engagement sessions taking place. So if folks want to look at the town manager report, we have links to that project. But then the first opportunity to engage is the, through the survey link, which is on the website. And then the input sessions start on July 30th. For the Regional Emergency Communications Center, we've actually put the architect out to bid. Again, you can follow that project on the town's website. For the Golf Club Building Committee, the Municipal Building Committee met two weeks ago, I think, with the architect where they presented several alternatives. The committee gave feedback to all the alternatives. All of those designs that were presented, as well as the committee's comments are on the town's webpage, as is the anticipated schedule for that project. So there's a lot of great information, particularly on this project, so I would encourage folks to go to that website. And all of that can be linked off the first, the homepage. The Civic Leadership Academy, their second annual is gonna start on September 3rd, so applications are due to the town manager's office by 5 o'clock on Monday, August 5th. So that application can be found on the town website. For the summer select board meetings, so your next select board meeting is scheduled to take place on August 20th. However, there's a need for at least one additional meeting to finalize the Harvey's contract. We need to do that by August 5th. And you'll, we'll also need another, a joint meeting with the planning board at some point to fill the vacancy left by Pete Pushard's resignation on that, on the planning board. His resignation is effective August 6th. The October town meeting is actually right around the corner. So that's the third Monday in October, or October 21st. The board will receive a draft warrant at your meeting on August 20th. An email went out today to all departments and various boards and committees requesting that articles be submitted to me by August 12th. There are many updates. So in the Finance Department, we actually promoted the individual that we hired, Christopher Latimer, from the administrative payroll, administrative assistant payroll position to the role of assistant treasurer collector. And then we actually, I think we have someone to backfill him, so fully, fully, we're getting there. Fully staffed in the treasurer collector's office. The Finance Department is also working with the DPW to issue the first stormwater bills next week. In the library, Kate Caraccio is the new library director. She's starting August 12th. There'll be a library open house on Friday, September 6th, from 5 to 7, where folks can come and meet her. The library is also hosting a weekly program for teens at the Extended Stay with transportation provided by VIA and Ascentria. They've all set up a little free library there and are working on similar programming at the shelter, at the Sharp Building. The Police Department's extended conditional offers to three candidates for their vacant positions. The department's also going to hold a promotional exam on August 5th to fill the three remaining corporal positions. In the Public Works, the 2024 Pepper Award was presented to the DPW in June by the Westboro Community Land Trust. The award recognizes substantial contributions to programs of the WCLT by a non-member. So congratulations to the DPW. The DPW also recently welcomed Kevin Ostrander, Mark Holbert, Dan Wilkinson, and Mike Dubey to the team. The ARPA-funded project to install chlorine booster stations at the Ruggles and Fay Mountain water tanks is underway and expected to continue into the fall. And approximately $10 million project to add a shared use path, improve Flanders Road East Main intersections, and resurface East Main Street from Hastings to Thomas Newton Drive, the DPW director came and presented this to the board, was added to the 2029 Transportation Improvement Program project list, so that survey work is underway. In the Recreation Department, as of July 8th, the Recreation Department has hired gate attendants to work at Lake Chauncey. So the, so the gate will now be open at the beach from 11 to 5, seven days a week. And the bathrooms will also be open beginning Friday, July 26th, when the gate attendants are working. Also, the dog park has been put out to bid and bids are due August 16th. Senior centers started their Tuesday night programs and will continue through August 27th. Staff and COA members actually did a tour of four senior centers two weeks ago with the community center architect to see what might be included in a future design. The town clerk wants to announce residents may have received vote by mail postcards generated by the state. Any voter in a household who previously applied to receive a vote by mail ballot will not be receiving a vote by mail postcard. Ballots for the September 3rd state primary election will be, will be in the mail by August 1st. This is only for anyone who requested a vote by mail ballot. And there will be in-person voting, in-person early voting for the September 3rd election on Saturday, August 24th, from 9 to 3 in Town Hall. In-person early voting will continue during normal Town Hall business hours the entire week of August 26th. So lots of information there on the town clerk's website related to voting. And then Youth and Family Services, Youth and Family Services outreach to several organizations throughout town. In July, approximately 40 community members received assistance for all sorts of needs. Affordable housing being the biggest request for resources. Youth and Family Services is also, has their back-to-school drive underway, so donations for the back-to-school drive can be brought to the senior center, library, police lobby, and the Youth and Family Services office. Last year, this drive supplied over 175 Westboro students with school supplies.
Just a quick question. Kim, you'd gone on a trip with the Council on Aging to go visit the facilities and I think there were pictures. I don't know, did you send out anything yet or is that something we can expect?
Yeah, I think we'll discuss some of it and some of the community engagement.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, issues and correspondence. Thank you, Kristi. Any, any issues and correspondence people would like to share? Can you take it first?
Yeah, you can do it.
I can do it, so. I, I do want to give congratulations to Westboro Little League and softball as they finished up their summer seasons in their tournaments. Our 12U divisional team, which is one that competes to go to the national, did really well. Losing a tough game for the championship of our region to Shrewsbury. But several of the other teams won their tournament championships, both on the baseball and softball side. And it was good to see and hear members of the community going out to watch the games, even when they don't have kids playing. And to support it is a great part of the community. The Westboro Affordable Housing Trust voted to provide a subsidy to the project, the housing project at 1830 Lyman Street. The subsidy, with the subsidy, they will be fully increasing their subsidized housing inventory from 20% to 25%. So in addition to six physical affordable housing units being added above and beyond what's required by zoning, that brings the SHI count from what would have been 27 now to 132. So helping us further maintain our 40B compliance.
Can you repeat those numbers again, Alan, please?
So, so the project has 132 units.
Yeah.
So they've increased the number of SHI units by six. But hitting that 25% threshold, we get to count all 132 on the inventory. And so a reminder is, for 40B compliance, state looks at the inventory, which includes units that aren't necessarily affordable when they fall within certain density and zoning guidelines. We are both adding to the inventory of actual physical units people can live in that are affordable, as well as the inventory, which gives us greater control of zoning of future projects.
Thank you.
And so that's working out well.
Sure, I'll go. Couple of things, library building committee met today. We're going through the recommendation, the finalizing the recommendation that will be made at the state level for access to, to the library and, and how we're going to make sure that that's available to everybody. And as well as working with Mass Save to look at potential grants for putting in the heating system and see other ways we can reduce the cost of the project. Second, an announcement or reminder that this Saturday, the Girl Scouts are doing textile recycling at the high school. Saturday from 9 to noon. Anecdotally, I heard, they do this monthly. I heard that last month was their biggest effort ever. I believe it coincided with the changes at the dump. That's all I have.
Sean, can you just clarify on the state access? You have the findings and you're reviewing them or you have?
So we've received recommendations of how we will handle handicapped access to the building and how we'll make sure we're in compliance and we need to get that approved at the state level to ensure they're okay that we can employ those recommendations.
So that's gonna go to the state now?
Yeah.
Thank you, Sean.
Just, just a couple of things and Kristi has always told much of myself, but following up on a couple of things. So related to the community center, the REC Commission is meeting tomorrow night and they're meeting with the architects to go through their evaluation as a committee, as a liaison. I was reminded that I can listen, but I should not be part of the conversation, which is fine. And then on Thursday morning is the next, so basically the Municipal Building Committee, based on the project most notable, the Golf Club, that we're working through is meeting every two weeks. And that next meeting is this coming Thursday morning at 8:00. That's just the update, so stay tuned. And I do just want to follow up with what Kristi said too, is look on the website. Thank you, Kristi and others, for getting everything out there. It's a really good resource for folks to, to stay up to date on the lot that's going on.
I don't have any issues and correspondence, but I do want to thank fellow board members for all of their work. Building projects are huge. It's a time commitment. You have two on your plate. You've got one on yours and anecdotally.
He's been all building projects.
So thank you. Thank you. It's, it's, it's a tremendous lift, so thank you very much. It's great work being done.
Oh, sorry, one more. And this is just, I guess, a confirmation question. So next Tuesday, there's two community sessions next Tuesday.
Yes.
I imagine a lot of us are gonna be at the evening session. Technically, we will have a quorum. It is not a select board meeting and we will not be presenting anything to the public. We are just as participants.
Correct, yep.
Yep. So confirming it is fine for us to have a quorum.
And while we probably won't comment, could we, just so we understand the rules of engagement? Or do you encourage us to be silent supporters?
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage that for a couple of reasons. One is you, you can't speak on the board's behalf, certainly, because you can't talk to each other. But also, I think, and I don't think that this would happen, but I, I do think that there's, there's just really so much excitement in the community about what they might offer for input. And I know that the board's really committed to, to hearing all of that and then reacting to it once you see what, what comes out of it, so.
Yes, very eager, very exciting. Any other? All right, then I will share my, my news. So I just wanted to share with the board and the community that I had the honor of welcoming Governor Healy last Wednesday to the town and her entourage of staff, which represented USDA Administrator Cindy Long, who will, in the near, not too distant future, will be the under, under secretary of the USDA. Also Congressman McGovern, Senator Moore, as well as the Secretary of Education and the Secretary of Health and Human Services to the town for the governor to announce the state's new or updated summer childhood nutrition program, where the governor reaffirmed the state's commitment of no child will be left without, or no child will be without food. This federal program brings $70 million to the state, allowing the lowest income families to buy groceries during summer months, which happened to be the worst months in regards to food insecurity. Shockingly, it's not during the wintertime. It's actually during the summer. The governor and staff and all involved were, enjoyed their tour or fails. And more importantly, they really enjoyed meeting the children in the garden and they talked to the children quite a bit about all the gardening activities that they were doing and what herbs they were growing and whatnot. I'd like to express a thank you to our new superintendent Borgers and her staff for doing an excellent job of preparing the school on short notice and doing an excellent job of presenting the town to the governor. So, thank you very much. With that said, I'll look for a motion to adjourn or go ahead and turn to executive session.
I will make that motion if I get it in front of me. I move the board entering into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the firefighters' union if the chair determines that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Mass LLC, was to support Superior Court CA Number 2285 CV01281 if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case Number 19 TL000768, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro at Tal, US District Court CA Number 423 CV12017-MRG, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court Case Number 23-40709, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property at 10 to 12 Mill Road and 231 Turnpike Road, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And finally, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of June 25th, 2024, and July 1st, 2024.
And I declare that open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating and litigating position and that the select board will not reconvene in an open meeting at the conclusion of the open session. May I have a second?
Second. Roll call vote. Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Keough, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much. Again, thank you to Westboro TV and I hope everyone has a great rest of their night.